It is six o'clock, let's call this meeting to order. Andrew, what can you list today? Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
Let's leave it to you. And to the Republicans, I wish you'd say this, my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, if it's singing of our national anthem, I will not do that. One can only hope. All right, well, let's move on to the call of the world, how about that? And does, oh, hey, new forms, yeah, take a little thing off, right? It's the little things, guys, it's the little things.
Very little.
Yeah. Rob Foraker.
Present.
Jill Hedler.
Present.
Brad Campbell.
Present.
Andy Schaefer.
Present.
Brad Fortis.
Present. I must say, I'm thawed.
Present is, council is here, present and accounted for. Uh, let's move on to the approval of the agenda.
I'm looking to approve the agenda.
Second.
Foraker.
Hi.
Hedler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fortis.
Hi.
Alrighty. Um, to number five, citizen hearing and other communications, uh, if Polk County Sheriff steps in, we will stop at whatever point we're at, council, as long as you're okay with that, and we'll take a report from them. Uh, we do have a report from Mr. Scott Prey, our fire chief. Uh, I have that handy and available unless somebody's got it printed out.
I have it printed.
You have it, look at you go.
Um, so, for his report, um, you said the fire department has been busy this month with accidents from storms, fires, and medical responses. Five rescue assignments, eight medical, and three fire. During a recent brush fire, our brush truck suffered two damaged tires that were promptly replaced by Ron Adams. After a structured fire, our engine required some repair to the primer pump that was completed by myself and Ron Adams. We recently replaced the generator on our engine that is used to supply power on scenes for lighting. The ice rescue gear was delivered, and they briefly trained on its usage and capabilities and limitations. Um, after the cold weather, I can say with confidence that we are looking forward to spring and warm weather.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that. Uh, it'll take us on to letter C, public comments on items not on the agenda. Any public comments? Anybody? Anybody? No. Mr. Hess.
Tony Hess.
Appreciate you, sir.
All right. So, um, I wasn't at the meeting where you guys probably voted on the, uh, the allowing the snowmobilers to come through town for the winter, so I could like some of the code. But, my understanding was they were supposed to follow a marked path and stay off the roadways to stay out of the park. Yeah, I don't think they've been doing that. Um, they've been in the city right of way on both the west and south side of the park. And they've been, they've been coming across on Maple Street. And, and not going up the field. To, no.
Not following the designated route.
Not following the designated route, up the field and then alongside, um, in the right of way to Main Street.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I was actually talking about that with somebody the other day. I don't believe that ever came up to us unless it was in a incentive agenda and I just don't recall or overlooked it. I know that's been a longstanding thing that has happened in town for way longer than I've lived here and probably most of us have thought about it. Which is fine, but I, I agree with your point that we need to follow the marked routes. I'd say what we, the best thing we could do is
Well, marked routes, and then did they actually approach council for protection? Because otherwise, by city code, you're not supposed to operate in town.
Correct. I know that's, it's, that's something we wish, we should follow up on, and then as far as, I'll say, order of importance and other things and miscellaneous, but I, I agree, so. Um, one thing I guess we could re, we do is reach out to the, I don't know the exact name of the club off the top of my head, um, but there's a big snowmobile club that does all the, the trail signs and the this and that. Um, reach out to them and say, hey, can you send a reminder out to please stick with the trails and such, so.
Yeah, I said, it's been a moot point for most of the winter.
Yeah, and I, I, I would say for the majority that those who do ride, you've got the, the random few that are always gonna, they're gonna do what they want to do.
Well, and at least they stayed out of the park, because that's what happened to your tree, the trees, the previous planting, so. It, it doesn't look like they actually came into the proper part of the park, but once they start approaching on it, it's not much of a left turn to go where they should.
Sure. No, I appreciate it. We'll, we'll follow up on it and reach out and ask a friendly reminder be sent out, so. Thank you. Anything else? Anybody? That, Mr. Hess again, no. Okay, uh, if nothing else, we will consider that, uh, public comment section closed, and again, if Polk County were to pop in at any point, uh, we'll pause where we're at and, uh, we'll take a report from them, so. Uh, on to number six, reports from elected officials, city staff, and standing committees. Mr. Foraker, as always, we'll start with you.
All right, um, tomorrow afternoon is 911 Commission and Polk County Emergency Management Quarterly Meeting, so I will be attending both of the host and act. Um, also wanted to call attention to upcoming, uh, National Weather Service Slum Spotter Training. Uh, next week, Tuesday, uh, Des Moines Radio Amateurs Association is having a training at Fort Des Moines Museum. Uh, that's from seven to eight thirty. Uh, and then Tuesday, March twenty-fifth, um, the actual National Weather Service will be doing a spotter training at Polk County Emergency Management, uh, down in Des Moines. Um, those, as well as other area, uh, trainings such as in, uh, Newton, Market Town, Winterset. Those are all on the National Weather Service Des Moines, uh, website and information for how to register for those, and they are all free of charge.
Very good. Thanks, sir. Ms. Heather.
Uh, cemetery board doesn't meet until Thursday, and they have actually canceled their meeting due to weather for, um, this month. I don't know if they will reschedule, or they'll just gonna wait till next one. Um, and then Midwest Waste Authority, their first Zoom meeting that they had a few weeks ago, um, me, Marissa, and Katie, none of us were able to attend it, so we did miss it. Um, I had Katie reach out for some more information on the board. Uh, they have a meeting tomorrow night, and I'm planning on going, um, but I'm a little confused why we're a part of it, or, and things like that, or what the board is for, and why we're involved. So I think Katie's just gonna reach out for some more information, just so I kind of know a little bit more about the board before I go and make decisions on buying equipment, so.
Oh, no, that's, that's absolutely fair, so.
Sure, she's just gonna get me some more information, but I do plan on attending the meeting tomorrow.
Okay, awesome, thank you very much. And once you get that clarification, you shoot us all a note, just kind of fill us in and bring us up to speed and
Yeah, yeah, and I can, do you want me to forward the, the agendas also, so you kind of know what the meetings are about, or?
I, I'd like to see them. I can't speak for the rest of the council and, and staff, but I'd like to see them, just to kind of stay in the know and know what's going on, so.
I can do that.
No, awesome, thank you so much. Mr. Campbell.
Uh, so last week, we had our first major snow event. Sounds like talking with Ron, the part-time help was nice. Uh, really was able to augment, uh, Rick, so they're not out there the entire time. With that being said, the hydraulic box broke on the big plow truck, and I regret to give you the replacement with a nice day from Tom Porter. So he came in, uh, perfect timing for that. And then, I think it was in Katie's thing, but I had to talk to Ron about it, but the truck is still like, they're days out, because apparently whoever makes the wheels for Chevrolet went out of business. So they can't find wheels for the truck, so they gotta, I don't know, I don't know how that happens with Chevrolet, anyways. Um, then, there was some issues with the lagoon ponds, so, uh, there is some debris that is sitting at the bottom near the structure, and the past two weeks, they will get the issue resolved. Uh, water treatment, sounds like talking to Ron, training's good, but it's going, uh, slow, so.
Any other, I know we've, and okay, you've been giving us updates, we email almost by the minute sometimes as things are going on, which, which is awesome. Um, are there any other issues that we've heard that have come up, or that we've had to overcome, or?
No. No.
And I'm sure we will be letting everybody know as soon as we know what's for sure gonna be online, because that's a question that I get in my personal inbox, probably about once a week or so, somebody shoots me a Facebook message or a whatever, and hey, when's the water treatment plant gonna be up? And we will, we will let you know. We will, we will make a big deal out of it, we will let you know. Anything else?
All is well.
All is well. Very good. Shaefer.
Perfect. All right, parks got together. Uh, we did officially get the news that we are able to amend the grant that was for the bridge, uh, and it's looking like we'll use that then for a cement pad, um, with, like, guard rail, I can't think of railing, railing is the word, guard rail sounds mean, railing, uh, so that people don't fall in the water. We are waiting for Jordan, I believe, to get back with us with some numbers on that, but that is exciting that they approved the amendment, so we can move forward with that. Uh, we are still in communication with, uh, everybody regarding the baseball field and what we can do to help them and what that looks like. Uh, it sounded like their most immediate needs were around things like lime, which magically only get produced in like one place in the state, and it's magic baseball lime, and uh, so we were working on trying to figure out what the city could do to assist them, what that looks like with our budgets, um, and how best to assist them this year, and then moving forward after this year, we can be a little bit more intentional about our budget, how we put things for them, but we were in the process of trying to figure out how to get them some lime, uh, here initially to help them out. And then, we're very excited, uh, we're hosting a Puzzle Palooza, there's a sign on the door, and I saw it going up on the interwebs today as well, and that's gonna be on March twenty-third. It's kind of dipping our toes in the water of providing some activities for people in town to gather, get to know each other, hang out, do fun stuff, um, depending on feedback and how things go, excited about the possibility of doing other things that are similar. The cool thing is, it's a really low expense sort of thing, but could be a lot of fun. I'm excited about it. Um, so that'll be two o'clock on the twenty-third here, uh, and all the cool people will be here, so.
Is that like a race to see how fast you
Yeah, yeah, two hours to put a seven hundred fifty piece puzzle together. Very exciting. Uh, but yeah, so, that is current status on parks.
Very good. Um, timeframe, I don't remember the, the date, we sat down with this gentleman right here, Travis.
Citizen.
That sat, sat in the meeting with him. I know he has some information to share with us this evening and talk about, and uh, I love, if you have any more to touch on in your report, but we also sat down with, uh, Jill Aldringer last Friday, Polk County Supervisor, had a little meet and greet with her, uh, so that was nice to sit down and just have a chit chat with her, very relaxed, very nice, so. Um, other than that, not else, not much else for me going on right now, just whatever you guys are letting me know about in the meantime. I've been chatting with Ron on and off as far as snow events and what's going on, and that ice storm that we had, I asked that he put down a little more sand and salt in some areas that were very, very, very slick, and even when you were expecting it, you were still sliding almost in somebody's front yard, so. Um, I know we're trying to be careful with how much we do apply and win and wear, but I want to make sure that we're also making sure everybody's getting home safe and navigating the path safely, so. That's all I've got for right now.
Uh, yeah, a lot of the planning and zoning met, uh, Travis is here tonight to go over a lot of that, and that's an agenda item, uh, uh, eight, yeah, there it is, agenda item number eight, so I won't cover all that now, but some interesting opportunities through the city, uh, we can learn more about that in a little bit. Uh, Johnny and I discussed some, uh, touch-ups and some different ideas to add to the code enforcement education, perhaps doing a physical mailer for those that don't have internet access, we'll be working with Katie and getting those ideas downloaded at some point, but we could talk about that during the code enforcement part, um. And then, gas station, there's literally meetings taking place tomorrow to continue to further that along, as we just don't have any dates yet, so. That's what I got.
Yeah.
I'll touch on a couple quick things. Uh, so with the water treatment plant, um, they had a lot going on this past week. All the technology and equipment is communicating and working like it should. Uh, Ron and Rick and Tom have been doing trainings. Um, they are on schedule, and they are almost ready to start the bacteria growing process. Uh, they don't know specifically how long it could take. It could take anywhere from a couple weeks to three months. So that's kind of the point where we're at now, and it's gonna be pretty quiet, um, kind of March and April with foot traffic in there. The lift station, um, we've been at a point lately where not a lot has been going on, but they did update us um, that they're just waiting on some parts, um, and then once those are in, allied, can complete the work. Um, as far as the CIP, updating the CIP, that was one of our goals. I am waiting on a cost estimates from Beanster and Kim, and then I will work with, um, Ben and KF Ben to come up with an updated CIP. Um, and then just to mention, uh, kind of an interest report, and including each month, shows how much interest we're gaining ever since we started the CDs on the, uh, fire accounts. Um, as you can see, we've been usually around the five hundred dollar mark per month. Um, and this past January, we made seven thousand six hundred and twenty-two dollars, so that's a very great improvement. I think we should be proud of that we're investing, um, our money now. Um, and then, so, so a couple grants, uh, that were submitted recently were the Keep Iowa Beautiful paint grant, um, hoping, so that's just, they provide free paint, um, so I applied for the maintenance shop, old maintenance shop in the city hall, uh, in the break room, and then the mini parks grant as well, was submitted. Um, there's some big ones coming due at the end of February that we're gonna try for as well. And then, um, last week, Chris and Dev were busy with Iowa State clerk training forces, um, and Ron and Rick were very busy with the snow. Appreciate all that they've been doing. We really have a tremendous staff, but I think we all should be very proud of the thing for, so, props to you guys. Do you have any questions?
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, it's been a savior. Uh, we did basically the same thing we do every month, and I was sure that I issued classes, maybe me too, so.
Most classes were required for, what was it again? Yeah, clerk certification, so it's part of that continuing education, if you've talked about investing in the past. Thank you.
They were webinars online, so you didn't have to travel.
Thank you.
Very good.
Mike. Uh, planning and zoning best on Monday of last week. We, uh, we looked at the, uh, the uh, subdivision at White Oak, Chantel, we're recommending council to approve a way to write to review. Uh, we had a site plan for a new second space building of the industrial park. We're recommending council approve that, it will be on the next month, I can be. And then we had a discussion about, uh, expansion of the industrial park. Uh, there's nothing to be added on right now, it's just, you know, preliminary thing, but we've got some ideas, so, some things, but that need to be addressed as we do that.
Very good, thank you, sir. Anything else? Any other comments, questions, anything we thought on? Okay, well, let's move on. Uh, to number seven, the consent agenda, uh, several items in there, if there was any questions, we feel need to pull anything out, or are we good to proceed as, as submitted?
Katie, you talked about G.
Yeah, I was gonna notice, um, or mention, notice, um, G, the hen house, pubbing grub, their alcohol license, um, is contingent. I think we need to approve it contingent upon their insurance, because we are waiting on that set, the drag shop.
Have we had any issues with them not having insurance in the past?
No, no, it's just, I can see it sitting in the portal that it's not quite uploaded yet, so.
Nothing else that I wanted to discuss, or just saving it up to you guys?
Motion to approve the consentages, uh,
contingent on?
Contingent on, that's the drag shop insurance for, yeah, for item G.
Second. Foraker.
Hi.
Hedler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fortis.
Nice.
Okay. Uh, so number eight, industrial park discussion.
John, I'm sorry, can I ask a question about the consent, I, did, it's already, I know approved, but I have a question about J. Who are the representatives of the alternate that are appointed?
Frank Mary and Deb is the alternate.
So, okay, for me. I didn't know if that was still an open item.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, number eight, industrial park discussion. Who wants to start us off? We go right to Travis, do we, where are we at here?
You wanna present?
I know, I know. However you guys wanna do it. Travis Assistant Big Development Corporation, so, um, I'm the original developer of the industrial park. Started as a thirty-six acre project, um, and grew into eighty over time. Um, I've got an opportunity now with Nick Holes, uh, to expand the park as part of the ground goes, so Nick and I have talked for a lot of years, five to seven years, something like that, um, and Nick and I are actively having additional conversation regarding buying some of that ground. Um, both of the north of the park, there's an eighty that's north of the park, and there's an eighty next to, next to the park between myself and Nick. Um, so we've been talking about that for quite some time, and we're getting closer, um, to that. So before we got any further, I wanted to make sure I came and talked to everybody, um, and had those conversations about what that would look like. Um, the deals with the farm ground are a little bit different, because we're usually ten, thirty miles changes. So, in order for me to purchase his ground, we're actively looking for ground to replace that with for him. Um, what I don't want to do is go find two hundred acres of ground, exchange him for his eighty, and then all of a sudden, Elkhart says, you know, we really don't want any more of that around here. Um, because I have a really expensive piece of farm ground that I can't do anything with. So that's kind of how the conversation started. Um, the, the piece I would start with is the piece of the north. Um, just because it's the most natural piece, a little bit of the history, it, it took a lot to get the park put together. Um, I don't know who was in town at the time, not in town, like, to your, didn't know, kind of how that came together. So I'll give you a little bit of history. The first thirty-six, um, acre piece is the corner, um, and there was a four acre notch out of that from Hoswagans, um, that I bought that from and later, and later put that piece in there. Uh, that was the last piece, the second piece was north. Um, so, there was nothing there at the time. It wasn't in the city, it was out in the country, no utilities and that type of thing, so. It took a tremendous amount of effort to, with the support of the city, to run out, we ran a new water line out, ran out of force main, that was a lift station, and I guarantee that as a developer, um, that there'd be enough real estate taxes to pay for that, you know, overtime, which had happened within the first couple buildings. Um, consumers brought me power from across the interstate, so we had to board interstate, that was about a million dollar deal, um, to get power, because I've got a weird little territory on the west side of town. Um, and then Minam, I had to bring power down from White Oak for the north forty. Um, so we've got all the power there now that I need, um, to expand it. There's no more, I think I had to bring seventeen new poles in, west side, or underground, obviously, of that stuff. Um, so, part of this conversation with Nick, and after we talked last week, Brad, has had that conversation a little bit deeper with Nick of, hey, um, how I got here to begin with, um, what I do for a living, I own a public accounting firm, that's where I started life. Um, I still own that same firm, but it's expanded into a bunch of different things, real estate being one of those. My, the conversation I had with the city roughly ten years ago was to try to stop Ankeny from just flowing through here and not have anything left of Elkhart, um, bringing it developed in the town that would just produce revenue on the tax side of things and not a lot of rooftops that had a lot of services that would be needed in that same eighty acre park, so. Same conversation today is why I'd like to expand the park, is there's the need. Um, kind of how I got to Elkhart is I, I call myself a boutique developer. Um, I do what I like to do, I do what I enjoy doing, and I stay away from the big developers, so. Like, all the commercial in Bondurand I own. Um, I was one of the first developers in Bondurand, um, with the residential subdivision side of things. Um, I like to be places not everybody else is thinking about at the time, and Elkhart was one of those places. Uh, and to be able to service Ames, uh, and Des Moines, on the north side of town, there was really nothing here. Uh, that needs still here today. It was a long process to get the first eighty acres sold, um, and there's still buildings going up now. Uh, I think the next process would be a little bit faster, you know, as far as that goes. I don't think it's a ten-year deal, it's probably more like a five to seven year, to get all the ground sold, um, and get it developed. Part of that I would develop myself, uh, because I do build a lot of buildings, some of that I would sell, just like I did up here. I still own two other buildings, the original two buildings, uh. Uh, part of the conversation with Nick is, you know, does he want to help keep Ankeny from basically jumping the interstate and coming as close to town as they could? His conversation last week is yes, he does not want to be part of Ankeny. Um, he would much rather be part of Elkhart. So that annex, so the annexation of his pieces, I originally went to him and talked to him about, um, the forty to the south, the eighty to the north, the eighty to the west, um, and he didn't seem to hesitate to say, I don't want to be in Ankeny, it would just make sense. What would he, what he would need, and I don't know this piece, you guys would know, is what would that cost him? It's not a cost from an annexation standpoint, because that's pretty easy, and I can help with that. It's more of, what do the real estate taxes look like? Being within city limits or being out Polk County? Uh, I know he's gonna reach out at some point, I'm not exactly, if he hasn't, I don't know yet, maybe it was you, Johnny. Uh, but he does want to have that conversation, um, and that, what I think would be, how I kind of talked to him about that was, we need to do something about the corner. Um, and we can't do anything with that corner if half of it's Polk County and half of it's Elkhart. Um, so that's kind of how the conversation got started, because there's gonna be something needed long term, you know, with traffic down there. So, um, it wouldn't be as heavy as the original eighty acres. We don't need more badge plants or anything like that, big water users or even that heavy, but it would still be similar type uses. Um, I built a lot of warehouses and things like that. Um, the proximity to the metro is really good, um, so it kind of opens itself up to that. There may be some manufacturers that they want to come here, uh, due to location. And they're usually bigger pieces, they'll usually take down twenty-five acres at a time, you know, things like that. So that's kind of the logic behind it. Some of the things we need to work with the city on, uh, Bob Beanster and I know each other pretty well, I know Bob's no longer with his firm, um, which is an interesting deal in itself, but, um, he was instrumental in putting those pieces together with my engineering firm, which is CDA, Aaron, Aaron Olondex, always done my stuff. Uh, some of the things we're talking about is, you know, the water salute now, which makes it a lot easier. Uh, when we first went in the park, we were dead end, which caused some water issues for us with pressure and that kind of stuff. That's pretty much been resolved now. The water treatment plant's gonna be great, uh, to a little, have a little better water quality. Um, you know, we had all the water we could get for the most part, but it wasn't the best quality water, which is harder equipment. All of the buildings I built all have softers and that kind of stuff, and they're trying to take and convert that water on our own. Um, the sanitary side, so power, gas, I don't think there's any issues there. Water, we have a main close to us that I can pull up. Um, the sanitary piece we talked about last week, of um, we haven't got into the great detail with Beanster and Kim, or Aaron, we're just not there yet. But my thought was to stay north with it. So when I put the original park in, there's a lift station at the base of it, I think we're about forty foot deep. Um, we ran out of, um, ground basically at the north side. I'm as shallow as I can be on the north side of the park. Uh, I can't go any, uh, any further. So the thought process was, there's two ways to handle it. One is to get back into that system and force it back to the lift station and have it forced back to town, but I know that's an old line, which isn't a good idea. Um, my preference would be, is to work out something with the city to go across the north side and connect on, and I don't remember the street over there, what's that north-south street?
The blocktop right over there.
Yeah, the blacktop, it was on a town.
Forty-sixth, the main.
Yeah, is to run a line straight across to start looping that piece of it to and getting into new pipe instead of old pipe. Um, and we're not that far from that. I think Kimberly's in between me, and I don't know who's on the other side of, uh, the tracks, uh, but it's not that much.
It's, yeah, no. That includes you working on the whole road.
You would have to.
We all would, yeah.
Yeah. Same thing, I mean, it's, yeah, we're always working with them. We had to do it on the south side too, um, when we put the south, you know, subdivision in, so, that's not a problem. Um, I don't have a huge immediate need, it's not like it's, I mean, I develop as things come together, uh, because I don't have a big machine that I have to feed, basically, and it's, a lot of it's dependent on the city, and a lot of it's dependent on, on what we can find for Nick. We've actually found a couple really nice pieces, but was way ahead of schedule. Um, and we passed on them just because I was like, I don't, we had to have this conversation first. So, that's kind of the gist of it. I mean, my goal would be to work with the city, I mean, same thing I did the last time. Uh, so, that's, that's kind of where we landed.
Yeah.
We covered most of that.
You did, so just to recap for these guys, and so boil down, what are you asking for tonight, or what are you hoping to gain from this meeting that you could take back?
I, I need some assurance that the city, I know in the comp plan, whatever version of the comp plan you have is, you're showing that is industrial north. Um, I just need reassurance that, yes, we can figure it out. Um, I never get too concerned about specifics right now, because we have a lot of things to work out. It's basically, it's, it's starting the process with the engineers of saying, okay, what are the options, which we've already spoke a little bit between the two the engineers of saying, okay, what are the options, which we've already spoke a little bit between the two groups, uh, what are the options? Like I said, I, I'm always looking to further the city. It would be insane not to run that line, it's, you know, on the north side of things to get it in, because eventually you're gonna wanna get back into it again. You know, so it just makes sense. Um, I don't know what the bonding capacity of the city is. Um, one of the things I, I, I can't do financially and won't do is pay for the line to go all the way through everybody else's property. Uh, because they receive a future benefit of that, you know, and you can't stick the developer with it. Um, I got stuck with that once already in Elkhart. It's called consumers' energy. Um, so I paid for that line. Uh, now they split it with me, but it was still a million dollars, you know, it's all said and done, which is hard to spread across forty acres. Um, but it's what you have to do. So.
And there, so some of that would be running across Kimberly land that they.
Would benefit Kimberly.
Correct.
He understands that.
And, and you had mentioned the potential of having those conversations with them and talking about cost and recapping for everybody, um. And then working through whoever owns the rest of it, we can look at maps and figure all that out. But there would be, you know, the potential setting up a connection fee district similar to what we did with the water pipe when it was run out to recuperate. Uh, for that, and then obviously working with PFM and budgeting for, you know, any potential upfront expenses. And then what year we would be able to accomplish that in, because if, I won't put words in your mouth, but if this, we decide that it's okay for him to move forward. It's not happening tomorrow, but it's not, not happening tomorrow either. It, it's gonna go, you know, it could go pretty quickly, correct?
Yeah, realistically, I mean, if, if, there's farm ground for sale all the time. So realistically, this isn't a twenty twenty-five project, it's twenty twenty-six.
So we, we do have some time, but we're talking budgets tonight, so it would be good to, to have those conversations and decide. So P and Z was obviously central in the conversation. Do you wanna recap kind of what your thoughts are? I know the future land use maps and things like that, you were discussed and the rest of the P and Z.
You know, there would be coins that would have to be annexed in.
Correct.
Uh, you know, then we would have to zone that. There's one little, there's one little section in the land use plan that we would have to modify to match the new use, but that's not a, a major issue. Cities do that all the time. Uh, generally, everybody kind of seem to be receptive. It's just, you know, we'll have to work, the city will have to work with them, you know, figuring out craft pieces and things of that. But that's, you know, something we need to be looking at out there anyway. Uh, so I don't see an issue. Uh, as far as, as that ground, Kimberly's got all of that east of there clear to, over here to Grant. They've got all of that.
Yeah.
In behind my house as well. Yeah, they bought all of Campbell's ground. So that, you know, as far as that goes, it's just him working with Kimberly as far as running a pipe across there. And that's gonna benefit Kimberly as well, depending on, you know, how they do that.
How, do you know how many acres are between the, the tracks and the forty-sixth? Is that an eighty or is that more than that, do you know? It's not that big.
Probably not eighty, I know that.
They're looking less than forty.
On the track. Less than forty.
Yeah, tracks before six.
Okay.
Yes, less than forty.
Okay.
And there's some obvious benefits too of that, that pipe running up north and the eventual expansion going up there. You know, obviously schools have been talked about in that direction, future industrial in that direction, but also contingency plans for this part of town right now, you know, the one line that's servicing, you know, we could start to look at options where we could move up and, and I tap into that, well, this one's under repair or a new one is getting built in the future. That way we're not taking anything offline forever, right? We're just waiting until we have the ability to, so it's give us an outlet, a second option as well down the road.
And, and the nice thing is on all the development, I mean, we're very used to whatever within our acreage we pay for. I mean, that's just the reality of it. And this is one of the nice things about this piece is it's sitting there and going east west, you know, that eighty of it's not going straight north. So there's, you know, it helps cover a lot of ground just within the park itself too.
Yeah.
Once also I've known.
Makes sense. So what you're looking for tonight is what's everybody's opinion on this? Do we feel comfortable with him moving forward with those conversations to acquire the land? Do we want uh, industrial park expansion to the north? And then eventually you said the western expansion eight to ten-ish years, if I remember correctly. So that would be later.
Um, I, I don't think Nick would wanna develop next to his house anytime soon. I mean, just to be honest with you.
Yeah.
So, and, and I would either if I was him, you know, and I don't know what his timeframe looks like as far as only he plans on forwarding, so.
Yeah.
But that was the next natural piece is, is that I said, Nick, I'll just go north, you know, that west piece, I'll just have a write a first refusal on it basically.
Yeah.
And then that way, when you're ready, you can have the conversation.
The, but the benefit of that would be, the totality would be the annexing of all of it now.
Uh, how far west does that push us hypothetically?
As far as he's owns and is willing to annex, and there's some on the south side.
If it wasn't any money to him, I don't, I don't think he has any problem annexing that. Cause he owns everything south, and I think at least an eighty.
From thirty-eight street to twenty-nine street.
Yeah.
From across the road from next, there's a twenty in there, Abys, there's an eighty in there, Jasper's old place on the south side of hundred twenty-sixth.
So that would allow us to secure that intersection as well. Now, obviously with that comes more snow plow costs, you know, we talked about that, road surfacing requirements. There's, there's investments that'll be, you know, from a city standpoint. But one of the things we all talked about, since I've been on council for five and a half years, is creating that nice barrier between us and Ankeny. And it's one of the reasons, as he's mentioned, the old council talked about all the time. It's one of the reasons why they built the industrial. The, I wouldn't even call it a concern, but the one comment from a member of planning and zoning was just thinking about the entrance to the city. And what we want that to look like, do we want it to be more industrial from that direction? Or are we okay with that being kind of the entrance to the city? And then how do we, if that is yes, how do we continue to improve that area to make it safer? Is it reducing speeds? Is it? We talked about doing traffic studies, right? That Travis, not you Travis, but Travis on P and Z has been a part of in the past to determine, you know, the usage of the intersection, turning lanes, stoplights, things of that nature, but we can't do any of that, as he said, until that land around it is annexed in. And frankly, the land around it won't be annexed in unless we decide to expand the industrial park. So it limits our control, but we have the ability to expand that control. Now, obviously, Matt's sitting here, it's budgeting season, there's a lot, a lot of, a lot of things that cost a lot of money and a lot of future considerations. But in the short term, I believe what he's asking for tonight is just for me to shut up and get everybody else's opinion on what you think respectfully.
And, and I think part of that is that, you know, just start working with the industry, kind of figure out what this looks like. I mean, that's usually the first indication I have from the city is when they say, okay, let's get B and K A together, CBA together.
Yeah.
Let's get all utilities on, on a piece of paper to figure out.
And from a tax benefit standpoint, industrial, these industrial land, there's, it's good tax revenue, right? It's, it's more profitable to the city than residential and a lot of other things that could go on. When right now, there's no profitability to it because it's unannexed land and it's, it's, you know. Yeah. It's not producing tax revenues for the city, so.
Council, questions, thoughts, comments?
Sounds like it benefits everybody, all parties involved, just from what I'm hearing.
That's the hope.
Yeah, I mean, truthfully, I mean, I think that the only, it's either you grow or you get grown over, you know, so.
I know when I came, there were, I think the population was like seven hundred or something. I mean, it was pretty small. And that was, that was what I, how I was trying to convince them is let's generate some movement. I mean, that's the reality of it. Like I said, I still own two of the buildings, so I know what that generates. Um, on Main Street, and I mean, it's just, we don't need anything, you know, type of thing. So it always helps the city kind of get feet underneath them, you know, and hopefully that's been the case. And I think we've got some pretty good assessments out there, if anyone's all said and done.
Glad that we're getting water treatment plan done now. So that we're not running into, you can only use your sprinklers on even our hot days in the summertime. The only thing that I would ask and question is the lagoons, would we, is the capacity of those, if we added another portion of the industrial park? Would we be able to, with what we have, or what does that look like?
You had mentioned.
Beanster and Ken is researching that right now.
Okay.
I haven't heard back from him.
And their current, their current estimations, and I'm going off of what you mentioned at P and Z was were in their opinion still four to five years away from needing it as the city continued to grow the current trajectory now. There's been some dispute on population numbers and things like that. Um, but we were already talking about the new lagoon uh, sells in twenty-six or twenty-seven anyways, probably twenty-seven at this point, because they're not in the twenty-six bracket. So we're already, I think, on track to have those in place by the time a lot of that build out is ready to go. I don't wanna sound uneducated, but I'm guessing there isn't gonna be hundreds of toilets to flush up there and a lot of sewage water um, from large manufacturing plants and things like that. It's probably gonna be a lot less tax than it would be if it was a hundred houses going in.
Yeah, but it's a conversation we're having.
Absolutely.
Support it.
That's actually why I stay on the residential, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't do anything on the residential front. I just don't like toilets. And everybody's always asking that, why don't you put up apartment? I'm like, I don't like toilets. I don't like. I mean, it's. Five toilets in it, I could, you know, in an eighty thousand square warehouse, or I can put on the same eighty thousand feet, I could put in hundreds.
Yeah.
It's just, no thanks.
It's what should be.
There is a lot. Yes, a lot of maintenance.
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
And, and that water usage or the, the lagoons will depend somewhat on who those ultimate tenants are that we don't know. You know, if a manufacturer wanted to come to town, that's a conversation with the manufacturers. Okay, what is your water consumption?
Yeah.
Um, because we would have to figure that into, do you even have the capacity to bring in here?
Well, and then maybe there's deals to be made with them to help us pay for increased capacity if this is where they wanna build long term because of location serviceability of other metros, so.
Been a lot of money, a lot of water.
Yeah.
That's part of that conversation is being, you know, asking to service the water second.
Yeah, and the current facility is being built with future expansion of population that's nearly double plus what we have now, so. Again, we could potentially have those developers come in and, and pay for that expansion to take place if their businesses were the ones who were getting your primary water.
Yeah, I would, I would anticipate them to be lighter users, you know, more like the rest of the world, that kind of stuff. So. You know, and I've built a lot of warehouses and that's another thing that, you know, I don't build, build big warehouses. Eighty thousand is kind of my match. It's a whole different kind of than what these massive warehouses.
So another thing that piqued the interest of a few of the P and Z folks as well is he mentioned that he actually has, you know, can jump any type of covenants out there as far as what the buildings look like. Cause one of the concerns was, well, we don't want another row of brown buildings coming into town. And your comment was, if you want us to change that, all we have to do is what?
Just have to ask.
We just have to ask.
So I, when, when I put that subdivision in, there's covenants there. I am the architectural committee. And people weren't asking. All of a sudden I see a building go away. I'm like, those will be colors that we use. So the first building I built is the youth shop. Uh, the whole concept behind that shop was the top of that was green to disappear in the corner. I mean, if, if you see the corner up in the summer, when you look across there, that, that building goes away. That was kind of the idea, it'd be kind of the sign. Second building I built over there is you had to probably still. Um, sim- similar kind of concept. The colors actually came from a company that I don't have to say the rest of the time. Um, the same thing, it's, steel costs the same price, whether it's white, gray, black. Um, so uh, CTI obviously got my sign off and so did all one. Go from the first four buildings built. Um, Resco wasn't an issue, but actually I'm going to build an Ankeny, how, Ankeny's up here. Great guess. Uh, but some of the others, nobody said anything. You know, the next thing I do, I go by it and I'm like, yeah, that would be different. And to the point where I actually talked to my attorney about it, he said, the issue is, if you do wanna enforce them, the city's gonna have to help you. You know, for the service, you know, it's all said and done. But there are covenants there and the next one happens. Uh, but if you guys can sum them for P and Z, you don't like the colors, I'll have to say something.
So the next batch of flex buildings, it's going up to the east of the group that they're starting to ask for approval. Hypothetically, we wanted those or we would suggest maybe that they're light gray, instead of the brown and two-tone brown colors. We just have to have a conversation as opposed to just signing off on the color of it.
Is P and Z getting like a color exhibit of what the building is actually gonna look like, colors, the colors team and everything else? Or if they are not, is that something you could be asking for, so you catch it?
Usually, usually with the, when we get the site plan to get elevations to show, you know, what the building is going to look like. And they normally will have colors on there. That generally factor one day and then put it on.
So, so the process, so you guys know all that works, P and Z as a body cannot tell me what to do with the architecture, it's whether I can be told. So the step for P and Z is, did you get a sign off from the, from the developer?
Yes.
On these. That gives you the horsepower to say, okay, if you don't have a sign off, we can't, you know, because of our covenants under fire. So because I've run into a, a couple cities, Brighton in particular, where they wanted to sign all my um, but we've had that conversation that you can't be that, do I need the color? And so then it falls back to the covenants to allow that process, you know, for you guys to get some teeth for that. Just say, okay, well, you haven't met the covenants that are already in place that we can, it's P and Z right now. And like I said, I'm happy to do that. And the whole idea behind that park was, I really don't, I own a bunch of buildings on the the Pfizer Park, Brian's, uh, and they did that over there. There's a bunch of horrible, horrible looking buildings over there. Um, and so when I put them on up here, it's like, you're not, especially once you get rid of the city.
I mean, are we ready for this? It just seems like every, every project you take on, of course, with the nature of projects, it's more expensive and takes longer than we expected to. And so there's obviously the unforeseen things with this that make it more complicated. It is all in line with everything that everybody wants. Wanna respect the landowner, what they want, obviously, we want that, you want that. So I don't think it's an issue of, on my end anyway, it's not an issue of, is it a good idea? Is it where we wanna go? All those answers from me or yes, it's just are we ready for whatever unexpected thing is gonna pop up with this? Who are we gonna get ourselves in a situation?
Yes. I find the thinking is, uh, already seeing Ankeny come up to hundred twenty-sixth west of the interstate and they're coming up, uh, twenty-ninth first flip, so.
Yeah, in conversations with, with this Brad, uh, he uses a phrase that I'm gonna echo, and I think it's very applicable here. We can either control the growth or we can be controlled by it. Change is inevitable, growth is inevitable. That's one thing that we all understand in this room, and anybody who watches this back understands that. I think it would be, my personal opinion on it, would be if it'd be in our best interest to control this growth and we have a say and we have the conversations and we be in charge, so to speak. Versus we just sit on our hands and then we get steamrolled in five to ten years because we opted to not. Uh, Mike, you had a comment, and then Mr. Adams, I'll come back to you.
In, in, in relation to what Angie was talking, we do already have that in our land use map and our comprehensive plan for that eighty acres to be, well, most of it industrial. The one section on the, to the, the one section on the east end was a multifamily that extended down to the road. Uh, so as far as, as that goes, you know, we've already put in that, that we were anticipating that to become industrial. As far as, you know, planning for the unexpected, it's tough to plan for the unexpected when it's unexpected.
Right.
Uh, but you try to, you know, think how many things could come up and the contingencies for what you think might happen. There's always a chance something's gonna come up that you don't think of, but you know, we address those as they come up. I think overall this is not a bad idea.
I'm saying, I think the relationship with you has been good up to this point, so there's no reason to be worried there. That makes me feel good.
Well, and I think part of it, you know, there was a lot unexpected the first round. I mean, it's the first big project for Elkhart. I mean, we were shocked, you know, in the park because we ran out of water, you know? I mean, things like that. We had issues with mid AM, you know, supplying enough gas, which, you know, affected the whole city. You know, I think a lot of those are resolved. I think it's, it's, you know, a lot of those can be taken off the table now. And I think with the new lagoons and that stuff, I think you guys have the calculation for being heated, knows to be able to help you. Say, okay, this is possible or not. You know, we were all shooting from the hip then, because nobody knew how that was gonna impact the city, right? Um, but I think we pretty much know that now. And I think, I think Kimberly's got a good grasp on what he can bring in for housing and how fast he can do that, you know, to help with those calculations as well. You know, so I think, I think you're in better shape now than you were.
Mr. Adams.
Uh, you're a little off on that, Mr. Four Acre in there. If you look and see who owns the ground at the corner of a hundred and twenty-sixth and twenty-ninth street, you will see that that's already Ankeny. And you also see that Ankeny is already up to about a hundred eighteenth avenue on thirty-eighth street, because I know who owns the ground and I know who owns another eighty acres on the north side. So I know what that's going for in there. So a suggestion would be to get the guys in that own the ground. And have a powwow with them and see if they'd be willing to annex in on their own. It was going to be annexed in on their own, but the council previous. It was going to be annexed in on their own, but the council previous all shunned it when Mayor Snyder was here. And he had them all in to go into it, but the council didn't want to because we couldn't afford to put in services to them. The second thing you're going to run into is they allowed rural water to come in out to there. And you're going to be tapping on their territory. So that can be a fight with given water over who has water. In there. So I would get the farmers in here and talk to them because I know where there's a farmer real close on the south side that's been buttered up by a guy that has some bucks. And if it goes with him, it will not have Elkhart on its name.
I think your timing is good. To give Nick to say he would like to talk about it was a big deal. I mean, just to be totally.
Cause until now, it's been like, no, not interested.
Yeah.
And then now he's got this where there's future land, more land for him and all of this.
Yep.
You know.
Yeah, he's willing to have a conversation where he never was in the past.
Yeah.
He wanted to stay in the county and 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 he has, like I said, I think he wouldn't stay in the county if he could. I just, that's not really feasible.
Yeah.
You know, with Ankeny pushing and then Elkhart wanting to push. So, you know, the comment was is that he doesn't want to be part of Ankeny. So.
And we have the opportunity to do this right now.
Absolutely.
The things of it.
Absolutely.
If you do his, do all of it. He's three quarters of a mile north, one thirty-eighth street. You jog over and there's a patch out there, a hundred and some acres, and he goes over to twenty-ninth street. Where that cell tower is, North County shit, he goes up to to Chubbix.
Okay, do that, but also do south of a hundred and twenty-sixth that he owns in there and the other.
Because if you've got that annexed in now.
That's a buffer.
Then that's tough to get them because all they need is just one guy to say yes. And I know the guy that owns a big chunk out there. He just bought another twenty acre, twelve acres for twenty-eight thousand dollars an acre, and I know where that'll go.
And if he can get both, they're greater, all of his spread.
Lot of acres.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
You know, both sides of the road, both sides a hundred and twenty-six, both sides of thirty-eight, south of a hundred and twenty-six. Now he's got a patch there.
Future conversations with the adjacent plan owners a little bit easier. Yeah, well, make it less attractive for Ankeny to bite that part of the apple.
If the city's got their fingers on it, then they can't annex the whole thing in. But if they don't, they got one party in there. In that section, mile section, it can go to them.
So maybe we're somebody reaching out to Nick, you know, when you get a chance.
Yeah.
And have that conversation. Like I said, I think his concern would probably be what's it going to cost me?
Sure.
It'd be mine. You know, what are my real estate taxes? Like whether I'm in the county or what?
It'd be agriculture, just like it was around the wrist.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know if the city had any.
I can't imagine it would change too much, but we can look into it.
Yeah. I just make sure he can answer that question.
Well, you share with Kimberly's experience with the farmland that they've got, that's in the city level.
Yeah.
Still need this sort of agricultural.
Correct.
Day. So, yeah. So I think we can just show her that, like, quite probably.
And I'll help however I can. Like I said, I came here 10 years ago to make sure Elkhart didn't get taken out. I mean, that that's the reality of it. You know, I mean, I just wanted to make sure you had a chance to make a run at it.
I think there's, I think if you look at, you know, there's towns, I'm not going to name any towns, but there's towns that are around us that don't have the ability to do this like we do.
Right.
And I think, truthfully, if this is the direction that we want to go, it'd be foolish
Yeah.
not to take advantage of this right now while the opportunity is present with us because we may not get another opportunity again. Like I said before, especially with everyone fitting, our parties involved will benefit from this.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and we are here because we are, we were elected by the citizens of this town to make the best educated decisions that we can and represent them as best we can. And I believe that's the, the underlying tone is keep Elkhart, keep the, the small town vibe, keep the this, keep the that. And to echo what, what Brad, this Brad just said is we'd be, I believe, we us would be dumb not to pursue it and again, control it.
Yeah.
So what you're looking for.
Specifical. That's what I like to hear.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming back. Ten years later, thank you. I'm trying. No, it's fine.
I know, I know.
It's, it's, when we were talking to, I mean, one of the conversations that probably needs to be had with city council or some members is what place was. Um, you know, Adrian died maybe five years ago now, you know, surely still here. That piece of ground is going to be crucial long term. Um, I've tried to buy it a lot. And it's just not going to be worth it anytime short or anytime soon. But I think it's always worth the conversation with the landowner. You know, of what the city's doing and why, you know, and how they're doing that. It's the same conversation with Nick of, if it's not going to cost you anything, is there a reason? You know, not to make sure this is all cohesive, you know, in a plan. So. He's got a farm manager, so.
There is something to be said about somebody going through it and then everywhere saying that maybe that's not so bad.
Yeah.
We started to be domino effect on that.
Yeah, normally we do the annexation, like when I'm doing the site plan work and that kind of stuff, and I'm bringing in the site plan, I'll bring that piece in with the annexation. And we might as well try to get all of it at the same time, you know, just to make it easier for council and P and Z, everybody else. So.
Yep. I think we have agreement that we're good with moving forward with that. Do we need a?
No.
I don't think so. On the best.
I think it'll help you control the speed limit out there too. You know, we were talking about that.
That intersection stop sign, speed limits, traffic signals enforced by aircraft.
Yeah.
He's having a roundabout. You do not put it around.
Mr. Vasquez, I'd like to see you out.
Needs to be massive. You can remove them.
Sixty-nine hundred twenty-six getting one in the summer.
Really?
Two teams getting it too.
Double socials.
See, our, our issue with them is, is we destroy them with semis. I mean, you just, you're dragging low weight tractors over them all the time. You just can't help it. You know, and they're, you know, all these cities are putting these roundabouts in and residential construction starts and that thing just gets destroyed.
Stay with that one out here. It's scheduled when that bridge goes out this spring, then they're going to start on this one five six. Then that one goes up two tenths.
Yeah. I don't understand it.
Yeah, I think we have consensus and we're good. We can move on and. Catch you on your way if you.
So I'll have Aaron get in touch with V and K again to continue, continue the conversations too, so we can start talking a little.
And then you're, you're, you're good with the reach out to Nick.
Yeah, I will reach out.
Okay. Yeah, he just said last week that, you know, it's great to have a conversation.
Good to hear that.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Alrighty, on to number nine, the special event policy. And we'll tackle letter A first. Ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by adding chapter one one niner special events. This will be the second reading.
Hey, I know the name. Has anything changed? Anything that amended?
There was some verbiage change, I believe, wording, um.
That was in. Application, I think. The, the ordinance itself, I don't think, has changed since we read it for the first time.
That is correct.
And I did want to know. So the next item is Mean Machines Special Event Application. And so technically it's not passed. It's not a thing. This application isn't a thing yet. So if you want to pass this ordinance tonight, you can. Yes. You don't have to. You can still wait and read it in March.
And gentlemen, I don't mean to be rude, but if you'd like to have a conversation, I'd ask you to step out into the, I know it's cold, but to not be a distraction for the meeting. So thank you guys very much. I, hey, have it in the bathroom, whatever works for you guys. So.
Strike that on the record.
Yikes. Anyway, so, um, so no, the, the ordinance, like you said, had changed, it's just a, a, an application that had some verbiage cleanup.
That has not been approved yet. Yeah.
But even if you pass the ordinance tonight, it wouldn't go into effect tonight.
Correct.
Yeah.
After it's published.
So.
And we haven't received any additional feedback since the first reading.
He's good. No, um, Rob, I've talked to him and we're kind of on the same page as far as the ordinance. He didn't see anything else. Last, we had the first reading, so.
This is, I'm just going to say this, this is not about any particular relationship the city has or any specific business.
No.
This is a blanket thing, even though I feel like it's turned into that. That we should just remind ourselves that it's not catering or against anybody in particular. It's citywide.
Correct, because the city continues to grow and potentially more businesses come in and everything. This is a, this is us getting ahead. Yes, we, we are addressing and talking about and encompassing yet, yet, but this is also moving forward to potential block parties and other companies wanting to have parties and road closures, et cetera, et cetera. So.
Well, yeah, we haven't had anybody reach out since the first reading with any grave concerns or sudden problems that we didn't know about.
I feel he's passing it tonight.
Yeah. Well, any other comments or questions? If not, you guys know what to do. Take it away with letter A.
So we need to approve the second reading, correct? Wave the third reading.
The third. Three.
Correct.
Sounds like something that you should put all the words together for us.
Yeah, please.
Criticized for it secretly and publicly. Um, so, yeah, we need to approve the second reading. Um, so we don't, yeah, we don't need to do that. So motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two, the second reading of an ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart by adding chapter one one nine special events.
Second. Four Acre. Hi. Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
So now we need a motion to waive the third reading. Motion to waive the third reading of ordinance number two twenty twenty-five dash two. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by adding chapter one one nine. And can I just have it and approve the ordinance? At the, in the same one or do I have to do two separate ones?
Do two separate.
Use everyone. There you go. I'll leave all that out.
Make it.
So motion to waive the third reading of ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two.
Can I second it?
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
And then?
Motion to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash two. An ordinance amending the code of ordinances of the city of Elkhart, Iowa by adding chapter one one niner special.
Second.
I catch a niner in a fake. Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. That was fun. On to number, number, letter B of number nine. Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one two, a resolution to approve special event application slash permit fees.
So this application then is not required to adhere to the previous ordinance, correct? Because the previous ordinance is not in effect until it's been published. So we're approving this just as if we would have approved it before any of this talk of special approval processes would have kicked in. Correct? Yes, everybody. Okay.
ourselves.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So making sure we're all on the same page for what you were saying earlier.
Yes. Questions, comments?
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash twelve, resolution to approve special event application permits.
Can I second that?
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
That would take us on to ten then. Uh, Mean Machines Cycle Special Event Application.
So, um, Rob submitted this for their Dino Shoot out in May. Um, he wants to start advertising soon. And we, um, Deb, myself and Rod, we all took a look at it and we didn't see any issues. He notified, um, the surrounding properties. He, um, sent along the insurance. I didn't see any issues myself. Um, I will note, he is asking for a waiver of the fee of both fees. Um, and I don't know if you saw that sheet in there that he filled out, but he explained as it's a, we're kind of testing the policy for the first time. So that was his explanation for that.
And as of the filing of this application, the policy doesn't exist.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, I appreciate Mr. Boggs being willing to go through the non-existent steps, if that makes sense.
I'd be okay with waiving it, but I wouldn't want to make a habit of it. Like this would be one-time occurrence because we are testing it and then after then that's it.
In, in all fairness, again, Mr. Boggs is going through the process that doesn't exist. So.
Right. Right. That's why.
Right, right, right. He could, he could have come to us and, and applied or asked for a, for the, for the closure and we could have approved it tonight at just as, as normal. But knowing that this is coming through and down the pipeline, he's, he agreed to go through the steps, be the, let's do a trial run on it, go through the whole process and so I, I would feel comfortable with the, the fees being waived on this based off of all that jumble I just said, so.
Waiving fees that don't exist currently?
Exactly.
Why are we talking about?
Yeah, exactly. Cause it needs to be talked about even though it's not there, but it is there, but it's not there. Uh, I did see one thing and I'm trying to find it on here quickly. Um, it minor, minor, and I'm sure it's either just a miscommunication or something or other. But there was somewhere on here where it said, yeah, I'm trying to find it.
The food vendor.
It was a food vendor that there was checked off that, yes, he'll have the food vendor, the fruits and such, I believe is the name.
Yeah.
And then somewhere else on the application, he had checked the boom, food vendors, the no box.
Yeah, I think that was a late add because he had brought back fruits and such, their insurance to me.
Okay. Well, this form really doesn't matter right now.
Right, right.
That's right, right, right. But if we're looking at it as if we are approving it by this, but we're not, but we, we get it. We get what we're saying. So.
Looks like he's talked to everybody involved, at least notified them. The only thing that I would see is I'm not really quite sure what his plan is for Garfield. We're going to run into the same issues that we've had before. Cause it's not like a real specific detail. Hey, this is what's going to be closed off.
Yeah, he's got the dash, that area.
Yeah, and, and the email that he sent out, um, I just had it. Um, we expect roughly a hundred people in attendance. Garfield Street will not be closed, but rather restricted to motorcycle traffic only along the side of our shop. So like, what does that really look like? Does it look like maybe just the east side of Garfield to be blocked off for a shop? Is it going to be an issue with the corner house? What is that? There's nothing that's like really definitive. Um.
Based, based off of this drawing that's on here, I would consider that, that, that it's going to be blocked off. It's going to be closed.
So has that conversation? Where, where, where are we at? Where are we at with that corner house with them hosting events?
I can ask.
On that email.
They are, yeah. But. Are we allowed?
But there's no response or anything from that. I can ask him for clarification on his plan. Um, like we did last year, just so we're not.
Having to cut out for them to get out.
Yeah.
Thing.
No, I get it. I get it. I will, um, talk to him.
Just because that was that, that's ultimately what presented the issues.
Well, the good news is they're informed and they're not here. So in theory.
I mean, I prove it being contingent on a plan with that they have spoken to them or that they have a plan with them, that house on the corner.
Oh, talking about Lily.
Yeah.
Probably. So my, my comment on this was if we can carve out where their parking is, is what you're talking about. Cause they're not actually using road closed signs. They could just use cones around that area so that they have access to it. It wouldn't block the whole lane, but maybe just like the left side or the west side of the middle of the street over. And then I would suggest instead of stopping at the corner here, they might as well just come all the way up to the driveway out here for extra parking. That way they're not blocking the community center, but there's really no reason for the rest of the road to be open other than access to maybe one business, which I doubt will be accessed on that day. So maybe that would be kind of the, hey, you're going to lose a little parking by allowing the greens in and out if they need it. Um, but you get more of it because you might as well come all the way up to the community center parking lot if we're, you know what I mean? So maybe we could talk to him about that.
Okay.
It's more space for him, uh, but it would give them a little bit more room if he's okay with that.
Yeah, I can talk.
But either way, I, I actually talked to the greens and they're, they didn't have any issues and they weren't notified.
I think I see what.
When issues were brought up, I should say, and they were notified. And I'll just say it like that.
By, by looking at the drawing and reading through everything, I think I see what, what Mr. Boggs is trying to do by eliminating it to here because of concerns that council you've expressed, we've expressed in the past of, okay, well, that's overflowing into the community center parking lot. And what if the community center's rented out that weekend, et cetera, et cetera, so on. Like I, I'm, I'm just guessing. I have not spoken with him, but I believe that's what he's trying to do. But I would agree with the orders. What you're saying is we push that down. So they do have the extra motorcycle parking, those who want to park there. And then the, the majority of the, the group is going to be around the shop anyway for the shootout to here to see to all that. So.
Yeah.
Having driven by and seen some of the events in the past, so. I, I believe that would be wise to have that extra.
And this is just for the May event. This isn't going to be occurring. So I'm, I'm fine with the brevity. I think he did his diligence and
Yeah.
it's been a good event for them and hopefully brings people into town.
Yeah.
Motion to approve the non-existent special event application for Mean Machine Motorcycles.
the nonexistent special event application for me and machine motorcycles. Contingent upon maybe a little more detailed parking plan.
I'll send it to you once I get
Yeah.
Information from it.
Good second that.
Fordice. Wait. Four Acre. Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice.
Hi.
Fail. We'll get there eventually. All righty, on to number 11, review city hall software proposals. Uh, and then with a potential action to accept city hall software proposals.
So, um, I don't know if you guys remember our conversations we've had regarding our G-Works software. That's what we use for payroll, um, accounting, general ledger, utility billing. All of that in the office. Um, we've been having issues for several months. It's a statewide. It's kind of a statewide issue right now. There's lots of cities looking at moving over and converting to a different software. Um, Deb and myself, we participated in several demos, um, a demo for, uh, uh, software called Civic Systems. And then we participated in a demo called Admin's GovTech. Um, and then the, um, also participated in Tyler Technologies. That's another one. So we did three in total, um, trying to compare them, you know, we asked other cities. Where getting data, where are you looking at? What companies are you looking at? Uh, we were very pleased with Admin's GovTech. Uh, they were actually the most feasible option also out of those three. Um, they had lots of features, very user, user friendly. Um, we both thought it was kind of a no brainer comparing it to Civic Systems prices, comparing it to Tyler Technologies prices. Um, so that's kind of where we're at on our, um, opinion of it. We did get a renewal back from G-Works. Um, the G-Works quote is 9,600 for next year. So it is significantly lower still. Um, but the customers, I mean, we haven't, we've had, it's been weeks getting back on our customer service inquiries. It's overall not been the best experience the last several months. Um, and we kind of talked about eventually, you know, when I first got here, we talked about eventually moving over to a better software as well. Uh, so that is kind of what we're proposing. I did include it in the budget, uh, for next year. So Admin's GovTech, they, they require 50% upfront and then 50% after six months. Um, I believe is what it said. So that is figured into our budget. Um, if we decide to go that route.
So some of the historicals on this, you, you mentioned this last few months, we've been talking about it in years previous leading up to now. The amount of time, the employee time and everything that's going into G-Works and the neighboring cities that we work with, even last year with doing some of the budget stuff and trying to get things squared away and said that there's no city of our size where they will be as large as we are becoming that are using G-Works and are successful with it. Still, we, we've outgrown it. And it's everything from animal licensing back to water billing every month and just the ease of all of those things and how it flows into our backend software for budget preparations and any of the true ups that she's doing with the bank accounts and, uh, it's something that we've been talking about for quite a while. So it's not just that they won't get back to us saying nothing, not to minimize that, that is extremely important. But we were dealing with that last year where there was true ups that needed to be done, transfers needed to be cleaned up. And it was like, hey, you might hear from us in two weeks if you're lucky, but it's kind of their support level. Uh, and it's gone downhill since then pretty, pretty tremendously. So the, the cost of using them for another year would, would in fact save us some money in the short term. Uh, but I think long-term where we're headed, it's better to get part of it now. Cause there's some of the, some of the fees that are built into this, correct me if I'm wrong, but they're one-time fees. They're kind of like startup fees or the training fees, their, uh, transition fees, things of that nature. But there's, there's service behind it. There's folks that are physically coming and, and helping in, in transitioning through it versus just, uh, hey, you just pay us this maintenance fee and we might call you back in two weeks. Uh, we need to modernize. It's time and we've talked about, I know it's hypotheticals, but AES integrations and doing little league signups and all the stuff where the city's collecting money or billing or that all flows through here and this system is much more advanced than, than, uh, what we have. Saving time honestly is, is a huge piece of it.
I mean, there's like text message optioning for residents. There's graphs. So you can put your data into official bar graphs. There's so many features, work orders. Um, there's just, there's an employee service portal for employees to use. It's a lot more user friendly than what we're, we have been.
Like you're talking like, like scheduling for you guys? Like would there be like a schedule thing for it? Uh, maybe, uh, like would public works benefit from it?
Yeah, like work orders is exactly for public work. So if we have an issue or we need them to read a meter or something like that, check it out. We can issue a work order to them and it shoots it right. They can get it right on their phone. Good thing is this is cloud-based. It's not a roster.
Right. And, and G-Works controls the server that all that information is on and it's up for them to send us information that we should have pretty ready access to to fill. Because of the, it's in a closet in Omaha or something. I don't even know.
Well, the G-Works has moved to the cloud too. And that's the problem. Their cloud-based commerce is gonna come a lot of bad problems.
Probably because they're not getting back home for two weeks on.
Well, I, I think there's still, um, all of it is. It's not, people are having trouble with their utility bill. I get the, uh.
From what I'd heard, they're very late to transition to cloud based and it's caused a lot of problems. So you're asking us tonight to approve, um, your preference would be?
That is our preference.
Council, any additional questions, comments?
You're the one that's gonna be able to say.
You think it's best and that's what's best? You think it's the right choice?
Yeah.
I also see it as, you know, we talked about future, future needs and future proofing and things like that a lot. And we're extremely excited about the folks that we have, um, in, in city hall right now. But if they choose to move on with their careers and go to other places, this is a better software for the longevity of the city than what G-Works has offered in the past. Each time we bring someone in on G-Works, we're essentially back training them to something that has been outdated for a while. And, and Deb, you can speak to, you've had to go through some G-Works training and it's kind of like unlearning how to do things simply and making it more complicated.
I remember to find somebody.
Correct.
Short term.
Correct.
Do you use G-Works?
So it's, it's, it's something that just from a city standpoint, it's a, it's a worthy investment into the, the longevity of the city regardless of who mayor may not be sitting in city hall down the road.
Which that's not an option, by the way, for any foreseeable future.
Well, it really is. It's an employment endless state.
Work with me here.
Legal.
Legal ease, John.
Legal ease, John.
Anyway.
Public meeting.
Oh, no, I have no, oh, yes, Mr. Hess.
Just a quick question. I did change. With this, with this new company, have you looked at any of their information around? If they've had any data breach occurrences within the last five years? To be honest with you, I've not signed up to do bill pay with the city because I don't feel any warm and fuzzy with what you currently have that my checking account information will suddenly be in Lithuania. You know, so.
Great. Yeah, that's a good point. I haven't checked, but I will definitely put that on my radar.
Okay, because they, I think, well, I, I don't know what the size of this company is, but they should have some sort of annual, if not bi-annual certification as to you know, what their security protocols are. And then along with that, you know, if they have a failure, mechanical failure of their system, what are their contingency plans? So you're not left, you know, the day before payroll, well shit, what do we do now? You know, they have they provided you any type of their BCP plans on, on how you'd work through that?
Yeah, that's a good point. That's, I, we didn't get into those specifics, but, um, I'll definitely ask them tomorrow when I get back in.
Okay. Cause I mean, again, I don't know what the two softwares look like side by side. I take, I take each your word that the one you're using isn't good. But you know, from a, from an end user, you know, if, if you want citizens to portal into it, I want some assurances that I portal, portaling into something that I, I feel fairly confident with, you know?
Yeah.
Not that all of our data is not out there in the black.
Say, if not that, then it'll be something else.
For what it's worth, a quick Google search, admin gov tech data breach, you would think would pop up number one in their research results. And I'm not seeing anything. Not to say there have potentially been issues, but usually if there is something along those lines, it's right there. So for whatever that's worth to you.
So, well, depending on their size, they might not be, you know.
Correct, correct.
They could be reported to the, to the authorities they need to report to, but would the media like report?
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, it's not like a big five bank breach. So that's basically the same information though. If you're doing bill pay throughout. Or your crisis information for your payroll.
So do we waive or do we make it contingent or for to to motion to approve that program?
Let me toss this question out, which I guess would answer yours. How quick are we needing, wanting to move based off of?
We do need to make a decision quickly. Um, just because they have, they're onboarding a lot of people. So we're, they're all trying to fit us in and get us all converted over within this year. Um, I would say we, I would.
I don't think the question I asked should hold it up because it's just information that change can follow up.
Yeah.
After the fact, because I mean, that's something you would, you would have to ask, you probably want to ask G-Works that you did vote off of it. So I, I didn't mean for that question to come up with works. It's just.
It's, but it's all worth things to consider and ask questions for and then, but.
And that's up to you guys. But like I said, I, my intention was if they come up with works.
I think it could happen with Civic Systems, Admin's Tyler, G-Works.
Yeah.
Any sanitation, I mean, it just.
It can happen to Walzberg or anybody.
Yeah, but I, I think that we are, should be fine moving forward tonight, but those are questions should be asked.
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, so, yeah.
I would imagine there's some type of insurance policy or something or guarantee, right? Something of that nature, so.
Prove it. And if it ain't kosher, she don't have to accept it too.
Exactly. One percent.
Yes.
So council, take it away.
Motion to accept Admin's GovTech as your new city hall software program.
Four Acre.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Fordice. Okay. Uh, number 12, resolution 2025 dash one three. Resolution adopting a premium only plan or a pop for the city of Elkhart employees.
Deb kind of helped spark this and implement it. So she knows a lot about taxes and stuff like that, but, um, so basically.
Sure you don't want to?
Um, this is a plan that's required by the IRS that we should have in place. So there's no, it should be approved to have this option. It's basically so employees can save money pre-tax basis to pay for their health benefits. So our health insurance. Um, and in turn it saves the city money as well. Just have, so.
So what this does is it lets the employees get their health insurance premium that they're paying pre-tax. And it means the city and the employee don't pay the bike and Medicare on that money. So it's a benefit to the employees. It should have been implemented years ago and, um, I just found it when I was doing W2s that we didn't have. So that way, so we're, it's really, you just want to do it. I don't think there'd be any reason not to.
Motion to approve resolution 2025 dash one three, a resolution adopting a premium only plan for the Elkhart employees.
Second. Fordice.
Hi.
Schaefer.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Edler.
Hi.
Four Acre.
Hi.
Switched off a little bit. He'll yell at me later for it. Uh, number 13, complaint policy.
This is on for discussion. And if you want to move forward with it, I can put it on the March agenda.
Is this mirrored off of any other city's complaint policy?
Yes, I believe it was the city of Independence. And so those modifications were put into place that were discussed at the January.
About it last time and there was some.
Wow.
And there were some wording issues that, yeah, when I read through it this time, everything looked less fluffy, so.
There was a, there was a complaint about the current state of the complaint policy. So we.
Complaint.
Is there a box somewhere?
Of the proposed complaint policy, proposed complaint policy. Sorry, wasn't.
I wasn't gonna say anything. You did.
Typically it was a proposed complaint.
You'll side eye me. I'll side eye you. Respectfully.
Well, I was gonna give you, I was gonna give you a little wink nod off of that, but I did, I look like I'm having a seizure if I do that, so.
I think we're, I think we're good to add it to the March agenda.
Yeah.
I didn't have any further questions on it or issues.
Yeah. All right, keep it moving. Yeah, no, I keep it entertaining as well. Number 14, spring cleanup day.
We didn't do that last year, is that correct?
Affirmative.
We've skipped it for the last couple of years, mostly because of life utilization.
Two years ago, what happens? I don't remember the year before that, but. Comments, questions? Yays, yays, nays. Should we do it? Should we not do it?
Ron and Rick's preference was the drop off, correct?
Correct.
That we were not going around and spending man hours and stuff, picking it up on top of the costs. So if we can just have people bring it to a central location, I use the shop parking lot.
And I can't remember that. I see Mr. Hess with you. I can't remember the exact utilization years passed, but that would make more sense anyway. If there's not a great need and it all comes to one place versus scavenging and or having us do a sign up or a whatever, so.
Well, not putting, putting it out there in your driveway will keep people from walking down the street, going to your stuff.
Bingo.
And.
Yes.
All I'm gonna say on that.
Yes, yes. Mr. Hess.
Well, actually I was gonna say the opposite of Mr. Campbell. I'm wondering if the lack of utilization is because people don't have pickup trucks to haul it down there.
We've done it both ways in the past. It seems like it's been about the same honestly, but we can ask Ron and Rick.
Well.
What they prefer, but.
Well, I guess I, if you would be possible, maybe just to do a sign up, you know, would, if, if we contract, if the city would contract with someone to come pick up and we charge you $10 an item or, or $20 a household or whatever, would you want us to come by, pick stuff up between a four hour window period of one day and one day only? Would you have interest in it? And you know, I've got a couple of grills I'd like to get rid of. I don't have a pickup truck, so I probably wouldn't get them down there, but if I paid you 20 bucks to have somebody contract with, come by and throw up their truck and dump them.
I beg your pardon.
I think if I'm wrong, we, the city would be paying for the whole. So yeah, in this scenario, we wouldn't be asking you to pay us anything to do it. The city would be fronting the bill for the whole.
Right. I say provide both options. Say we'll, we'll have someplace where you can bring it free of charge.
As a way to recoup or say, yeah, I, I give it.
If you don't have a way to do it, you know, would you, you know, let us know if there's enough interest, we'll contract somebody to come by and pick it up. Not guaranteeing it, but it's, you know, if there's enough interest, we'd look at it.
The two options that were provided for agony sanitation, it was either or though, correct?
Either.
It was either or, it wasn't and. So we would have to see if maybe there's an and option potentially or.
Well, maybe you, maybe you don't have city bank or acne sanitation do the pickup. They provide the, the roll off and you'll do someone else to do the
the one year we did it when I was on the council or two years, we at Ankeny Sanitation come around at certain time leave stuff out. What could go in the garbage went in the garbage. They brought the truck around. We loaded it into there and then they had another guy go around, pick up the iron and pick up the rest of the stuff in there and it was done with. And there.
Mr. Basky?
Uh, AJ, you said Elkhart.
So if it's option one or option two, um, I like what Mr. Hess had to say about some people can't get their appliances to a central drop application. But his point, would it be possible to have like a city sign up where let us know by this date, if you need something picked up? Cause option two, we have to provide city workers to help load the containers. It'd be possible to have, have a sign up date with an end date and the day before the, this event takes place. Um, Ron and Rick can take the truck around and for people that have already pre-signed up and given city notice that can't get their appliances or whatever they need to dispose of, Ron and Rick can go around and pick them up for them. And then if you weren't signed up by that date, then sorry, we need to figure out a way to get your own items there. If it's an and or, if it's an or, um, since we've done something, we do an and often.
There's might be able.
Just something to consider for the people that can't get their stuff with these two.
So three things, just real quick. An, an and or option if we can ask. And then the second one would be the part-time public works folks that they have on Svezow, perhaps we're engaging them to that because Ron and Rick don't usually work on the weekends or, you know, they have enough snow hours, they're probably into overtime by then. And then the third thing would be maybe if you have stuff to pick up on the sign up, you can, uh, check a box that says, I am able to loan my own crap into the vehicle when somebody comes by or I need assistance. Because we may not, there may not be that many people who need assistance loaned. the items and they just don't have a truck to get them to said location. So that way we're not mandating that Ron and Rick are the ones going around to twenty-five different houses loading a fridge or curtains that weighs four hundred pounds or whatever.
So have we done, historically, have we done a sign-up?
No.
First, to my knowledge.
That's why the either or option would be best because an Ankeny sanitation could just drive around, pick everything up and then end their day at the the parking lot over here and just pick up the rest when they're done. And then you wouldn't have to involve city workers at all if there's an either or option. Noting that it will cost more than the quoted two thousand twenty-five dollars, which is ironically the year. So maybe next it'll be twenty twenty-six. That's what they'll charge us, but, um, so, yeah.
So is that all the information we need? Because I think a decision should be made in March.
Yeah.
To set the date.
Well, I was also gonna include when I read this, we're doing some education around, um, code enforcement. So perhaps our March and April code enforcement, hey, did you know?
You can get rid of that.
You have waste in this and this, and if you have properties that contain this and this, and you've been waiting for that opportunity, boy, do we have a deal for you. It's coming up in May.
Three ninety-nine.
Come one, come all, kind of like the cops do with the lottery tickets, right? Or they, they say, hey, come here and then like, whoops, you owe child support, you're going to jail. Except not really.
Anyway, back on track, please.
So my point is, we, we give people a chance to start to dispose of stuff before any fines and things come out in July. For, for having.
I think that's fair.
Yeah.
Cause then we show that we've done everything on the city's end.
Yes, let's get that information. Yes. We'll laugh around next month.
I, I think this is a good outlet for that.
Yeah.
And nothing that wouldn't stop you from on a one-off basis saying, hey, we've noticed you have this, perhaps you just don't have the ability to get.
Correct. Some proactivity on our side. Yeah, that's what I was hinting.
No, I like that.
Maybe it's a doorknob, maybe it's a letter.
Yeah.
If they drive by each property, then there's really no excuse.
Correct.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah.
And I think there's enough good people in this town too that would be, hey, I don't, we, we see the citizen Facebook pages of the, hey, I need help with this and yeah, I'll be over in ten minutes and two other guys show up too. And just, I think there's, there'd be enough of that where that would be. So, no, I, I feel like that.
We can learn some edit and make it better next year too. And if we do need more city involvement or we could do a not-to-exceed amount where if ASI says, well, we would assume this, it'll be two thousand and twenty-six dollars next year. But if it exceeds this, then it's two thousand and twenty-seven and we could, you know, we could make a contingent on something. You get the point.
No, good information, good input from everybody. Thank you guys very much, so.
But yeah, if you want to put it on for March, we can get you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We're all done with that. Any other comments, questions that would take us to making sure, yep, take us to number fifteen, then code enforcement. Who wants to start off? Who has comments? Who has input? Who has feedback? Who has codes? Who wants to enforce them?
Trailers. Can we talk about that really fast? Just because a question was brought up to me.
Okay.
Um, there's, I don't know exactly verbatim on trailers, but it said something about utility trailers can't be parked on the streets. So are we looking at this as like somebody taking the spot out in front of their house as like a permanent parking area for their trailer? That scenario, or are we looking at it like somebody has a trailer connected to their truck and they use it every day and they Monday through Friday, it's out on the street and then on the weekends they go put it away? Where exactly does that fall? And again, this is only, only inquiring about this because I was personally asked about how does the city view this? And that specific example is this individual's converting a utility trailer into a food truck.
Oh, okay.
And so he wants to be able to work on his trailer out in front of his house in preparation for the nice weather. Um, but he's like, am I in violation of city code by having this out here, even though it's not permanently stored here? I just take it here a couple of days at a time, work on it and I take it back to where it's being stored at.
Um, but I feel like that code, cause I, I ran into some issues with it too.
It's not, it's not written very well.
It can be interpreted additionally. So maybe we want to revisit the trailers.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to pull up code right now, but yeah, it's, it's, it's very bland. All, all it says is no vehicle. And I've expressed my interest to Katie as far as changing that with my, my perspective on it is we have a lot of folks who have campers, who have boats, who have this, that. Not to allow long-term storage on the streets, but seasonal, you've got a, a, a one-week period or so, X amount of days for seasonal prep, tear down this, that, and then it needs to be approved.
So it says recreational vehicles and utility trailers for the purpose of this section, recreational vehicles are defined as motor homes, travel trailers, physical trailers, yada, yada, yada. Uh, utility trailers are trailers for the use of hauling boats, pontoons, wave runners, snowmobiles, motorcycles. But it doesn't really. No person shall park any recreational vehicle or utility trailer upon any roadway within the city wall. My neighbor uses his trailer for plumbing and for his business that he owns, you know, so it's like, can you not have his trailer on the land? So we don't have to get it too far into the weeds on it, but grant code enforcement.
I would, my, can I, can I say what my personal interpretation of that would be? Is that allowed permissible? My interpretation of that is it's dropped, it's disconnected, it, it is stagnant.
Parked.
It is, it is, it is parked.
Yeah.
Now, if it remains connected and it moves on a daily basis, then that based off of how it's currently written, that would not apply because it's constantly moving. It comes home, it leaves, it comes, it's.
And I think a violation would be totally egregious, right? I mean, somebody that's gotta park there for weeks, but if it's parked there for a few days, city.
I believe, I believe vehicles are already tasked with being moved every forty-eight hours. So if it's, if the trailer's attached to a vehicle, it would apply to the same forty-eight hours. So as long as the.
Correct.
Every truck with the trailer hooked up to it doesn't sit there for more than forty-eight continuous hours. Uh, and then also remembering that that particular code is enforced by Polk County and, and they're looking through town and the odds of them driving by a vehicle and then remembering forty-eight hours later that that one hasn't moved without somebody notifying them are pretty low. So that violation, you know, unless it's called into city hall or Ron or Rick notice it, habitually being in the same place. Yeah, that being violated at this point are probably pretty low anyways, but there are some folks who are using the city streets as parking lots and um, that's the intent of the code is to help clear that stuff up.
Correct. It's not a parking lot, it's a street. Mr. Hess, you had a comment?
I've got quite a few comments, so if anyone else has something quick, we'll let them go first.
Do you have anything on the current topic?
Yes.
Okay.
It's specific to um, code enforcement. So, so one, you know, for part of the education, we've got the code ordinance that is currently available through the city website. Is that all current code?
Okay, just is.
All that has of what?
It says it on there.
Yeah.
It says it on there to a version.
Okay, but.
That's the newest one as of a month ago. We were looking through it.
Based off of, we did the codification and everything, yes.
So, um, I, I saw within the, um, packet that you have a home center for someone that for six hundred dollars a month for up to eight hours a month, built for your code enforcement for you. If it's only eight hours a month, isn't that eight hours a month that could be absorbed by current staff of the city? Actually, that comes out to seventy-five dollars an hour.
Believe we had this discussion last month's meeting, I don't know if somebody certified this. Yeah. Great.
Good. What certification? Um, cause I, you know, I read the state of Iowa job description for local workforce officers. It's basically anybody with a high school diploma and has worked within a city.
There you go.
So, so typically those people will make seventy-five dollars a month. I, I'm questioning if, if you think that the work can be done within eight hours a month, why wouldn't we contract that out? Why couldn't just make that expand to your existing staff?
I think there's something to be said about an independent, third-party, uninvolved individual, right?
Now, I want someone who's vested in the community, but as we're, as we're doing code enforcement according to education.
Sure.
To enhance the community, we have somebody that's got a firm established interest in the community, I think we could have suited.
I will say, I will say, I think you're both right. I, I, I want it to be somebody who's established in the community, but we've also have recent examples of where um, we've been accused of being biased towards some code enforcement issues where if an outside interest, even though it was paid for, would have been the one to bring that forward. There is no outside bias claims that can be made, which then caused us to have to engage our city attorneys and also where what we've decided as a council, and I think this is what we maybe talked about last month or whenever we talked about it. We aren't, we aren't looking to take their attention away from where they're already going as far as this comp plans and the CIPs and the longer-term stuff and tasking them with the use of those eight hours or whatever a month. However, we're going to be asking that outside group to bring the information back so that they can be filtered through, it can be looked over and it can be compared to previous violations, previous mitigation plans and things. So there's already staff hours going into it. So it's not just, there'll be zero hours or there'll be eight. It's more like there might be forty or there could be thirty-two if we could offload some of it and also cover ourselves from a bias accusations and things of that nature.
Seems like a pretty good use of money.
Well, bias accusation would always be impossible because it's an agent that's working on behalf of the city, so the city has influence.
I understand that.
Agent acts. So, but I'm just wondering, you know, hell, you could hire a PRN person or whatever, you know, for an occasional, or you've asked no benefits, all they get is a paycheck, same. I think you could hire somebody at twenty dollars an hour and maybe put in ten hours a week instead of eight hours a month.
Are you volunteering, Mr. Hess? We have an online application you can submit.
As long as it's under my campaign fishing class, so.
Hey, as long as you cite yourself accordingly if you're both parked on the street more than X amount of.
Shore fishing.
I think it's, I think it's good input and as far as we can take that into consideration, we haven't approved to spend any money on it.
I, I just saw seventy-five dollars an hour, eight hours a month. Again, eight hours, where are you gonna get accomplished? Seventy-five dollars, seems a little rich.
So you're all gonna pay somebody to address somebody about something that's very personal to them, right? So I think, I don't know, probably related to maybe a little bit of father life, right?
Yeah.
Uh, you're paying somebody to go up to somebody that's comfortable in how they're living. That this is okay how they're living. Maybe this is how they've been brought up, but it doesn't go with city code or, or city standards, right? So that extra incentive that you're talking about, monetary incentive, might be to deal with the BS they might get received on the backend.
Okay, but those, that contract at eight hours, they're not going to go up to a citizen and say, hey, here you are, it's like, hell. They're going to send them a letter in the mail and that person, when they get pissed off by the letter, they're gonna talk to one of six meetings. Okay, and it ain't the guy mailed the letters, just, just pay seventy-five dollars a month.
Yeah. It was hard.
And the discussion last month, uh, that contract was, I believe, two people in the state that do that for a job. And so that also covers the traveling, all of that, um, six hundred dollars. Get out there. That's not necessarily what we're saying as the most ideal situation. That was just what was out there.
Well, there might be some people in the state that make their full-time living in there, but I take that back. There's code enforcement officers in all the large cities, states.
Correct.
Right, but these are the ones that would like park in a small town, it's like, yeah. They've created a niche level. Job, good for them. I think if you pay them seventy-five bucks an hour, more power to them. I'm just.
Supplying to me.
Yeah, I just don't.
Well, good input all around. I, I'm, I'm in favor of, I know we, we consider all avenues. Um, yes, I'd like to have, you know, city staff handle what they can as much as they can, but if there is the option to offboard and, and Mr. Campbell, like you brought up, that, you know, could be a sensitive subject to approach. It could be this, that, I'd much rather have somebody who does it constantly all the time, that's their thing versus sending Katie to go knock on the door or something like that, not to get on the spot, but. Exactly. So, anyway, um, if there's no other comments, um.
I do have, I didn't have one.
Yeah.
Um, so I saw it on, I think it was posted on the Facebook about you, you were talking about the trailers and whatnot. And I think, John, you had brought it up about updating the code, because according to this, a utility trailer, already find is trailers used for the purpose of hauling boats, pontoons, wave runners, vehicles.
Correct.
There's nothing on here like, if I had a construction trailer, according to city code, there's nothing against me parking a forty-foot gooseneck on my road that has an extender on it.
It's still a vehicle though.
It's still, it's still be the forty-eight hour, yeah.
It's still considered a vehicle that.
Still, it's still falls underneath the forty-eight hour.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would just think in the state.
But, but it's good to include it in. Like, I get what you're saying. Your name again for the record?
AJ. Sixty-nine dollar, I mean, I just, the clarification of utility trailers is very vague. It's based upon sports. It has nothing to do with like what utility trailers. So I'm just clearing that.
No.
Clearing that up quite a bit.
And I will say, I do have my eye on a couple of different codes that in, in the future need more clarification, need updated to better define to cover things exactly like that. I won't say loophole, but et cetera, so. Well, we, I know we need to keep moving because I know we need to get onto budget and everything. So if, Mr. Hess, if you had any other additional questions, comments, input, if you can shoot them in an email, send them over to us and everything, we'd appreciate it. Thank you for what you, what you brought to us though. Um, let's go to number sixteen, is there any other business needing discussed?
I don't have anything.
Awesome, that was easy. Alrighty.
What's the date for number seventeen?
On the number seventeen, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one four, resolution setting a public hearing date for the proposed property tax levy for the city of Elkhart, Iowa. We're confirming the date on that currently.
So we have to pass a resolution to set a public hearing date for our property tax levy. Um, this is going to be on Monday, March thirty-first at six P M at city hall. And we will have two separate meetings, fifteen minutes apart.
Motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, uh, resolution setting a public hearing date of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five at six P M at city hall, uh, for the proposed property tax levy for the city of Elkhart, Iowa.
Second.
Four Eater.
Aye.
Adler.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Schaefer.
Aye.
Four Eater. No, I said other business and everybody said no, so.
I just wanted to say that the Eagles won the Super Bowl and I wanted that on the official record. Thank you. No further questions.
Yeah, your time has expired. Thanks, sir.
I'm gonna give a half of it when it's due.
Before you get started, you know what? It's a draft beginning here.
Why?
The thing is, there's not.
Air circulation.
It don't bother me any bit. There's no covering on the outside and there's no covering on the inside, so I kind of don't want to.
You just needed to run the pit right in the middle. Fire up some bacon.
Okay, here we go. Budgets. I, I am Matt Stufel. We, I'm with PFM, uh, financial advisors. We are the municipal advisor for the city. And so we help the city with really all things finance and then we're on retainer with the city to really help with kind of the everyday questions, which is very much, uh, the budget. Um, it's a huge task that, you know, we help, um, Katie and Dev think through all the strategy, you know, and so um, I'm gonna start with this page and this page is kind of a newer thing. Um, you know, the legislature has been hard at work on property taxes and has changed the, the property tax laws. I think, uh, nine times in the last twelve years. And so the most recent iteration is this adjusted city general fund levy and it's relatively complicated, so I'm gonna do my best to explain it, but essentially this is, depending on how much the city grows, the non-TIF portion of the city. So the city is broken up into TIF and non-TIF. But depending on how much the city grows, on the non-TIF portion, if you grow above two point seven five percent or four percent or six percent, then it determines how much you have to reduce your property tax for just the adjusted city general fund levy portion of the property taxes. And so this is just the math that shows for fiscal twenty-six that we're going into. The non-TIF, uh, valuations grew eight point four two percent. So from fifty-one point eight million, uh, to fifty-six, uh, point uh, two million. So that's eight point four two percent. So the current adjusted city general fund levy is eight point four eight dollars per thousand. So essentially, the city has to reduce that piece of the property tax levy. You don't have to reduce your overall property tax, but that piece of it has to reduce down to eight dollars and twenty-three cents. Piece of the property tax levy. You don't have to reduce your overall property tax, but that piece of it has to reduce down to eight dollars and twenty three cents, three, uh, three nine nine. And so the city will receive an additional twenty three thousand dollars because of the growth. And so instead of. You your revenue is growing at eight point four two percent. If you would have just kept the property tax flat, you're actually going to grow at five point two six percent. In your, this is the piece that you pay the staff wages out of and and some of that stuff. There's a bunch of other components to your property taxes that do change, but this by law now has to be reduced. And so. Um, the goal when we set out was to kind of stabilize property taxes, to kind of keep a level property tax. That is something that, you know, Katie and I talked about, um. A lot is what's what's the council's goal and that was the direction given to her. And so, um, by this reducing here. It essentially allows you to increase the debt service levy, which allows you to free up some local option sales tax money to use that money kind of in a different avenue. So it doesn't. I mean, it just changes the equation. It doesn't necessarily restrict you at this point. Now that by law is going to have to get down to eight ten over the next several years. So by twenty twenty nine. If you're not to eight ten, you're going to have to go to eight ten. And so. I'm sure the property tax laws will continue to change every legislative session and we'll be here to help with the math and figure out like, how do you run the city? With the resources that you have. Um, but. This sheet is, you know, I mean, you guys were over the six percent. And so you were impacted by this, uh.
So just to clarify, so. We were at eight four eight. This next budget year will be at eight two three and we have until twenty twenty nine to get to eight point one.
That's right. Yep.
So we're.
So if you grow above six, if you grow above six percent next year.
Which we will.
Then it will drive you, uh, below the eight, the eight ten and then you'll be there. So it's about twenty four cents a year, um. Is what that factors in.
Did this, maybe you note off top here, maybe you don't, but the last time we looked at Kate, when I looked, Katie and I looked at this, our. Growth percentage was well more than twenty. We're near eight, but what did you show?
Yeah, we're going to get into this because you will. You, the city didn't grow.
Yeah.
Let me say that again. The taxable value of the city did not grow.
But we have more people.
From this year to last year. And it's a lot of it's because of, I think, how the abatements hit, uh, the valuation. So. We'll see this in the models. This is the first year that that Elkhart hasn't been double digit growth since back in twenty sixteen. So.
Growth from a population or growth from a revenue? You mean revenue growth, correct?
I mean, value.
Assess valuation.
Assess value in the city. Assess value and tax.
But it doesn't mean people haven't moved in. It means that we haven't got more value up.
Yeah, it means you're not collecting taxes on on these people. And so the the reason you grew eight point four percent on your non TIF. Is because in fiscal twenty five, we captured a bunch of TIF revenue. And we released some of that this year specifically to just have more of a balanced budget in TIF. Um, but that's what drove your your increase here. It wasn't evaluation. So, um. Okay, so we we maintain, you know, several models, um, and I'm going to go into these in a lot of detail, but. One is the geo debt capacity. This establishes your legal ability to borrow. And I guess if I just, uh, look at. So the the geo debt capacity, geo debt limit, this this tells me how much money can you, uh, borrow under your statutory limit? The tax analysis is say, okay, you're going to borrow that money. How are you going to pay it back? How much are you going to have to raise property taxes? Or where are you going to bring that money in from to pay that debt back once you do borrow it, if you have the authority to borrow it? The TIF model is essentially. Tax increment financing, which is how most cities and certainly how your city has funded your economic development growth has been through TIF. And so, you know, when I hear about the industrial park. You know. Certainly you've got the ability to fund some of that with TIF and have those property taxes pay for that infrastructure. You know, as you go north, if that line starts to to benefit future residential users, then you it it complicates the TIF laws because. You have to do an LMI set aside if you do. Residential TIF. And so we, with the lagoons, we tried really hard to avoid using residential TIF. So we didn't have to do an LMI set aside. Um, and that's why we paid for part of it with sewer revenues and part of it with. So. As you go into that, we're going to just have to work with Dorsey and Whitney to be very intentional about how much is that going to cost? How much is that line going to benefit industrial and economic development growth? How much is it going to benefit, uh, residential, future residential?
What about current residential then? So if we were to hook this part of town into it, that's already established. That doesn't change the equation because that's not future residential then? Or does that get even muddier? Or is that a Dorsey question?
It's a Dorsey question, but what the law is trying to do is they're trying to say. If you use TIF. To make market rate housing more affordable for those market rate houses. You also have to use TIF dollars then to benefit non-market rate housing. So load them out at income housing. And so how are you? How are you showing that you're going to do that? And then the other thing it does is it puts a, um, a ten year. Or if you get permission from the school district, a fifteen year sunset on your TIF districts as opposed to economic development or twenty year. And so it really limits the amount of. Time you can collect on those things. So, you know, TIF gets complicated. That's why you pay Dorsey what you pay Dorsey. That's part of why you pay us what you pay us. Is to help think through all the dynamics in terms of, you know, because we're out trying to do whatever the city wants to do. At the lowest cost to the taxpayer, at the lowest cost to the rate payer. I mean, that's essentially why what we're here for. You know, we're not here to tell you what to do. You tell us what you want to do and then we'll help you figure out how to pay it back. So. Um, so TIF cash flow is there, the local option sales tax, which has been a big source of funding. Um, and will continue to be a good source of funding that you have, you know, you have to use fifty percent of it for property tax relief. So we track that. Um, but then you can use fifty percent of that for any other lawful purpose. You know, I think in your bond refer and your referendum on that, it was for quality of life improvements was where that was supposed to be. So. And then your utilities, you know, your water, your sewer, the stormwater utilities are the three that we help. So we get into the debt planning models. The way these are set up, the fiscal year is off to the left. And this first one is the geo debt capacity. So it establishes the legal debt limit for the city. And so as. You can see here, the historical growth valuation column, you know, fifteen percent, twelve percent, fourteen percent, fifteen percent, twenty five percent, thirteen percent, forty five percent. Was what I, we had said last year, this year, negative one percent. And and so that's the tax abatement piece that showed up in a big way this year. So I'm sure you added a lot of property to the city. But almost none of it hit the property tax rules. None of it hit the ability to to levy taxes. It'll come, you know, as those abatements roll off, that value will come. But. It's the first year we haven't had this, this big number. And so this sets your debt limit. So. You know, you're still, you've got a debt limit of six million, two hundred fifty thousand. You currently have, um, a twenty eighteen loan, a twenty twenty loan and a twenty twenty two loan. And then you also have to count the rebate agreements. So you currently have a rebate agreement with the daycare and then, you know, in principle, or at least I think in maybe in. In actuality with the gas station you have those. So that's, you have to count that annual payment as debt. So as we go into fiscal twenty six, the city has about two point two million of geo debt outstanding. And geo debt just means that you've pledged property taxes to pay this back. So all TIF debt is geo debt, um. And, you know, like the Main Street loan, uh, that we did in twenty twenty to help, you know. Finish out the the piece of Main Street, you know, that's going to roll off here in a couple of years. But. You know, the city has the ability to go out today and borrow an additional four million dollars. You have the the legal ability. So if the, if they came back and said this industrial park. Can't imagine it would be over four million dollars, but if they said it was eight million dollars. I mean, the answer is like, it's not no, but it's it's, I don't, it's going to take it, it's going to take a, a lot of, uh, hoops to jump through to get there. They come back and say it's one point five million or a million dollars. TIF is certainly a piece that we can use now. You can still pledge revenues, but. Your sewer revenues and your water revenues are pretty well maxed at the moment. So.
And that was with pretty sizable increase percentages the last, what, four straight years?
And, you know, we've got big water increases. We we we. We tried to stretch that. Uh, the increases out over a ten year period for the water plant so that we didn't have to do a fifty percent, a hundred percent water in increase in the year that we did the debt. Um, and so we need some of that. Growth, to be honest. I mean, you need to continue to grow because if we don't, it's going to. Fall on the burden of the current rate payers, you know, and so, um, but yeah, um. Okay, so that's exhibit one. This essentially says, you know. When Katie calls me and she says, I got a project. It's two million bucks. I look at this and I'm like, okay, we can figure this out. If she calls me and says it's ten million bucks, I'm saying, yeah, you're going to have to tell them to go shop somewhere. But, um. The next page is broken into two components. And it's really the tax rate. It's the property tax rate. And this is just the debt service component of the property taxes. And so the city's not limited here. And actually, when you pledge geo debt. You have to raise the property taxes to infinity. To pay back the debts that you've pledged geo bonds for unless you come up with other revenues to pay it. And so I call these abatements. So we're bringing money in from TIF. We're bringing money in from local option sales tax. We're bringing money in from water and sewer and stormwater to help pay for those. Bonds so that you can keep the property tax rate low. But if you. If you don't bring in the abatements. The county is not going to approve your budget and they're going to make you raise the property taxes, whatever it takes to pay those debts off. Because that's essentially what the city has pledged when it's pledged general obligation debt. So. Um, i- if you look here, this is the taxable value. As opposed to the other. Uh, page was the assessed value. So the difference between the taxable value and the assessed value is the rollback. And so residential properties, uh, pay property taxes on. And I used to know this number, but it's like forty six percent of your assessed value. So if you have a, um. You know, three hundred thousand dollar house or a two hundred thousand dollar house, you pay taxes on forty six percent of that house. You don't pay taxes on a hundred percent of that house. That's the resident, that's. What's called the residential rollback. And then businesses. The first hundred and fifty thousand dollars of a business, they pay the residential rollback. That was a recent property tax change. Then above that hundred and fifty thousand, you pay, they pay like ninety percent, um. On their taxes. And that's. It gets looked at every year at the legislature. So, you know, this year's budget shows that the debt service piece, I mean. The goal was to keep the overall tax rate the same. So your adjusted city general fund levy went down. Um, so what we did here is we increased, not by the full amount, but we did increase the debt service levy portion. Uh. So that the overall tax rate would. Be the same so that it went from ninety four cents to it would, you guys see the budget documents that get published, it. Will be a dollar twelve, five thirty six. And what that allowed us to do is not bring in the abatement from the sewer. And so we, you know, you've got a five percent. Uh, if your ordinance says your sewer rate is going to go up five percent on January third, July one, twenty twenty five. Sorry, built into into the ordinance. City council doesn't have to act on it. If we wouldn't have taken this out, we would probably have to increase that sewer rate more than five percent. I had to do it with the ordinance. So by us increasing the property tax and the debt service and reduce the money coming in from sewer to pay for part of the lagoon. Then we can live within that five percent increase on the sewer side. So. Uh. So you can see here. The city is going to bring in seventy seven thou, seventy six thousand, nine hundred twenty three dollars from property taxes. Three hundred and forty nine thousand dollars from TIF. Seventy seven thousand dollars from local option sales tax. Twenty three thousand, five hundred and twenty eight dollars from stormwater, nothing from sewer. And then twenty three thousand, eight hundred from water, um, for a total. Of five hundred fifty thousand dollars to pay your debt obligations in the upcoming fiscal twenty twenty. Uh, five. We've got no new debts planned at the moment, so. Taking a deep breath, let the dust settle, um. So that's good. You know, the this just shows the loans. So the twenty twenty A, you know, that the debt service on that is about, uh, three hundred thousand, two hundred ninety eight thousand. And that's just the, uh. That's just the TIF piece and the piece that we had structured by lost. There's, but there's an additional piece that's just sewer revenue that has to be paid from sewer revenues. But that was the piece that we. Uh, worked with Dorsey to say, this piece of that project is helping the, uh. Residential homes, whereas this piece is the piece that allows you to size that for industrial expansion. In economic development and all of those other things. So it's, you know, it gets complicated when you get into the actual plan of finance, but it's really important to have them on your side. Uh. The twenty twenty bonds are also paid for by TIF. Uh, that was the Main Street, uh, the permanent papers and all of that stuff that you had to do. To essentially get that stormwater grant, uh, you had to kind of. Round that out with like a local match. And then the twenty twenty two series, you know, did a lot of projects. It did a lift station. Uh, it did the Prairie Point Park improvements, um. Just trying to think through, it refunded a water loan that allowed us to to do the other of the water loan. So, you know, it was really. The CIP bonds that the city sold most recently to kind of round out its capital plan. And it's, it's getting paid for by various different sources, but, you know, I think the Prairie Point Park. There were some some stormwater improvements as well.
That was a big chunk. There was a stormwater.
Yeah, and then, uh. So those are the components of that. And then, you know. We did this to make it a balanced budget, right? So this debt service. Fund should bring in the money it needs to pay the debt and pay the debt. And that's, it should be a clearing account. So. Okay. The next piece is TIF and, um. You know. The the thing that I want you to look at is if you look at the the total tax increment. You can see back in twenty nineteen, it was four million. And it went up to fourteen point five million. And the city has been releasing increment. Every year because there's more increment there than you actually, uh. If you captured all the increment, it would be very difficult to run city halls because you wouldn't have enough revenues to in the general fund. Uh, so we, you know, we spend a lot of time thinking about how much TIF. Can we, should we collect? And if we could have collected all, we would just pay the lagoon bonds off. We would just pay off all of the debts because we, you know, that's what we would do with that money. But then you wouldn't have enough money to run city hall. So. You know, when we were sitting there last, you know, really two years ago. With Brenda. You know, there wasn't like a plan for city administrator. So we decided to live really lean this year, right, that we're sitting in right now. We collected. You know, six hundred and eleven thousand dollars in TIF. Because that's what the city felt like they could run the city on this fiscal year, uh, which probably feels pretty lean, you know, now with the stat that you have. And so this year we backed off on that. Instead of collecting six hundred and eleven thousand. We're collecting four hundred thousand. Well, the twenty year life on the original TIF is about to expire. And. There's a lot of value. So think everything except for the industrial park, um. Is going to expire and that resets and that is going to be. Released back to the general fund. And there's going to be a bunch of money coming in the general fund when you get to fiscal twenty twenty nine. Um, because you're not going to have the choice, you know, you you're going to have to release that. And then. And then as you add economic developments, you've got to do them kind of on individual properties, you know, like you have been on the gas station and that, you know, you do an ordinance to add. You take a property out, you add it back in, you know, and that's what you've been doing on these ones that have rebate agreements. Whereas, you know, a lot of the other developments have just been captured, you know. Um, and so you're going to have to be a little bit more strategic as we get to, um. Kind of some upcoming developments saying. Do we want to take that property out while it's farm ground? And then add it back in and reset the twenty year life on, you know, the next plots or whatever. And if it's just residential. It gets really complicated on the residential TIF component of it. Um, so we'll have more of those discussions, but. When you get to twenty twenty nine. You're going to see more of the tax base go back to the general fund, you know, and so then there's going to be some discussions there, you know, depending on the state of. The property tax laws. And so then there's going to be some discussions there, you know, depending on the state of the property tax laws. That kind of runs its course on House File seven eighteen. It goes through twenty twenty-nine where everybody's gotta be to this eight-ten by then. Um, and so if the growth comes in right after that, then in theory you could collect all that, you know? But what the, what's the legislature gonna do, you know, related to those? So, you know, we're here for the strategy piece of that, like what's in the best interest of the city? What's interest, in the best interest of the taxpayers, you know, and helping you guys kind of walk that balance. So, you know, the obligations that we've got in here for, um, you know, for the TIF, you know, the, the, the daycare right now, based on its property taxes that it's currently paying, we show is going to get about six hundred and ten thousand dollars of the not to exceed one point five million. If they pay the taxes, then they'll get that money back. But if they don't pay the taxes, they don't get, it's a rebate, you know? So, um, the gas station, um, is it not to exceed seven hundred and fifty thousand? You know, based on what we have modeled in here, they're, they would get about six hundred and sixty-three. Um, the, you know, the first industrial park loan, which was done in twenty fifteen, you know, paid off in twenty twenty. And then we've got the sewer lagoon, main street, and then the maintenance building portion of the twenty twenty-two bonds is also being paid out of TIF. But you can see here, TIF is your, probably your biggest mechanism to fund bigger infrastructure projects.
Yeah.
Um, and so even if you just release that TIF in the future, you know, I'm showing that you could probably fund one point two million dollars of debt service just in the horizon out through twenty thirty-nine. So, um, you know, there's always a trade-off. If you take it in TIF, you don't get it in the general fund. You know, so it's not new property taxes. It's just diverting property taxes that you could use for city hall, you know, and to run the city to economic development activities. And so, you know, you have a relatively lean staff. You know, I mean, there's been discussions about additional public works people, you know, for years, I feel like. Um, and so at some point with the new water plant is if you expand the lagoons, as you grow and have more streets to maintain, you're gonna have to add public works folks. Um, and so if you tie up everything in, in TIF, it doesn't really leave anything to run the city on the other side with. So it's a balance, but you know, that's why we do this model. Uh, okay. And then this, this next one is, is local option sales tax and, um, so we've got fifty percent property tax relief, fifty percent any other lawful purpose. Currently you're getting about a hundred and sixty-two thousand, um, from local option sales tax. And so, you know, we kind of track, okay, eighty, um, you know, eighty-one thousand of that has to be for property tax relief. Anything you transfer to the debt service levy is a hundred percent property tax relief because you would have to levy property taxes to pay that debt if you didn't transfer it there. So the easiest way for you to prove that you're using that for property tax relief is to transfer that money into the debt service fund. The other way to do it is to fund things with cash that you have the legal authority to bond for. You know, so you can bond for pretty much any road project. So, you know, if you spend local option sales tax on road projects, you could make a really good argument, well, we could have bonded for that. We could use property taxes. We chose not to. We use local option sales tax. Um, but like pickups, you know, snowplows, yes, but it becomes a little bit harder, like, you know, like, how do you go get there? So, you know, this fund, you know, you, we, we, when we did the lagoons the first time, we modeled twenty-five percent of the overall lagoons would be paid for out of here, and that was about sixty-two thousand dollars. And so this is an area where every budget year, we look to say, how much do we need from local option sales tax to help with the debt service levy? And so you, you can see, because we dropped out the sewer, we increased local option sales tax from sixty-two to seventy-seven to buy down the tax rate, essentially. We took that extra fifteen thousand and we said, we could levy it in, in property taxes, but we don't want the property taxes to go up any higher than they have to be. So we're gonna take some additional money from local option sales tax and buy down the property taxes. And so that's why it went to seventy-seven. Um, and so this is money where, you know, we've got this growing, I think, two and a half percent. But as you go from one year to the next, you know, there's a hundred and ten thousand dollars here that you can use. It's one-time money, but you can also bond against it. I mean, people are gonna, and people in Polk County, this is a Polk County tax, you're gonna continue to get money from that sales tax. And they've talked about changing the sales tax laws, but it's a pretty good revenue stream that you could use this to abate debt service with. So you could, you know, if you think, you know, eighty thousand dollars probably gets you a million dollar project. So you could probably fund a, you know, one point three million dollar project with this money without having an impact to the taxpayer. Um, so that's kind of gives you that order of magnitude with that.
Okay.
Okay, those are what I call the debt planning models, you know, non-utility stuff, uh, TIF, debt service levy and sales tax. Any questions on those?
You with me, Angie?
We're, we're, we're here.
You're here for it. Okay. The Water Enterprise Fund. So, um, normally I'd take these out five years, but because this plan of finance was so complicated, we took this out, out through twenty thirty-six. And we essentially structured this debt, you know, to try, we tried hard to keep it to a ten percent rate increase per year, you know, which right now, you know, your, your water bill for twenty twenty-four on average was about forty-three dollars a person. You know, this ten percent increase, you know?
Try eighty-seven.
Well, based on, uh, forty-five hundred gallons, if, if for the average customer who buys forty-five hundred gallons, um, in twenty twenty-four, the rate was, it was forty-three dollars.
That's just water, not water and sewer.
It's just water, yeah, just water. Yep, yep. So this is, and that's, you know, that's a common misconception that people get a water bill and then go, my water bill is, you know, mine would be a hundred and fifty dollars. Um, but it's water, it's wastewater.
Infrastructure.
It's, uh, yeah, uh, water, wastewater, stormwater, um, garbage. Do you guys have garbage on your utility bill? No, it's recycling, yeah. So, um, so this is just the water piece of that overall utility bill. You know, but right now, IFA made us in, adopt the ordinance all the way through when you needed the coverage. So we adopted this ordinance all the way through twenty thirty-one. So we're trying really hard to live within this ordinance. And when, you know, Katie and Deb send us the budget, if it doesn't fit, we send it back to them and we say, we can go reopen these ordinances, but I don't think we want to. So we, we can't pay that much city hall cost out of the water fund because we're trying really hard to live within here. And hopefully, as the city grows, we can ease off on some of these. But we couldn't make any more, um, aggressive assumptions and still, you know, feel good about it. So, um, you know, the way these are set up is the top piece is the rates. Um, and then the green is kind of, we're trying to isolate that average customer based on your utility billing. The, the line thirteen, that net average per thousand is really important to us because that's kind of the driver of the revenues. And then the water usage there, you know, we've got one point five percent built in. We're assuming you're gonna build an additional twenty houses a year. I mean, that's kind of what we've got, um, built in, you know, for the future. And we, you know, we revisit this monthly, we look at this and we try to see, are we on track? We update it annually. Um, but the, the water fund brings in about, you know, two hundred and eighty-two thousand, uh, with a hundred and eighty-three thousand of expenditures. Anytime there's a big plant expansion, I'm always just wondering like, what are the operating costs gonna increase to that the engineers didn't tell us about? You know, so I am just, what are the chemical costs gonna go to? What are the electricity bill gonna go to? Like, what are the unknowns? And, and until this is built and functioning for a little while, we're probably not gonna know. But we've got to keep the revenue available for debt at least ten percent bigger than the debt payment. So you can see on the next page, and I know these numbers are small, so I apologize for that, but, um, you can see on the next page, I need, we needed this twenty, twenty fifteen B, which turned into twenty twenty-two A loan to drop off. Um, and we ramped up the debt payment, like the debt payment in twenty twenty-six for that series twenty twenty-three A, which financed this plant was a hundred, a hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and five dollars. It's gonna get up to three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars over the, the course of that. I mean, that's what it costs to build a five million dollar treatment plant. And so, you know, we tried really hard to protect the current rate payers from not paying a dollar more than they had to to fund this, you know? I mean, they're gonna get better water and all of that stuff and so they, you know, they need to pay a little bit more. But it's really to be able to continue to grow at the industrial park and continue to add plat after plat. And so, you know, we did our best to ramp that up and to, you know, stay where, you know, those red numbers have to be above one point one zero for you to be in compliance with this loan.
Right.
Yeah.
So back when, I guess, was it eighteen or nineteen when we were below that one point one? Do you remember what year that was and we had to take a huge increase back then?
Yeah, just wait, we'll get, we'll get to it at the sewer.
Okay, I remember that. I remember that being kind of like a holy crap moment where we had to take a thirty whatever percent increase, so.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get there at the sewer.
No, appreciate that. I just see one point one zero and I get PTSD from that.
And so we're also running the cash really tight in this fund. Um, and so the cash as a percentage of O and M, I like to see it between fifty and a hundred percent. You know, you did finish twenty twenty-four at forty-nine percent, which is a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. Um, but as we get into twenty-six, we're projecting that to go down to a hundred and six thousand, um, which is twenty-eight percent, you know, and and you have a water main break and it drains your whole tower. Um, you know, you can spend a hundred thousand dollars on public infrastructure. And so it makes me a little bit nervous, but we're trying to balance that. Man, having too much money in the bank and jacking up rates, you know, like, and so it's, it's gonna be a fine line on your utilities, especially on the water, over the next several years. So something we're watching very closely and we'll work with, uh, Katie and Deb to kind of make sure the budget's there. But the other thing is, is as this project finishes up, man, any change orders, we gotta make sure we're pushing back on if we can. If we can't, understanding how did we miss this? Why, why are we having these change orders? Because the sewer lagoon, all of a sudden we were four hundred thousand dollars over budget and we're still cleaning up that mess of that, you know? And so, um, you just gotta-
delays in opening the facility and extra leaks that need to be fixed. And we didn't, somebody didn't spec the pipe correctly for a treatment tub last week. And I think that just, sorry to interrupt, but I think that furthers our conversations about expanding our potential partnerships with different firms when we, when we spec future projects out. Because I remember those conversations after the, because I came on after the lagoons went way over budget. And I know we've spent more, we had a pretty good amount baked in for the, um, what was it, a hundred and seventy-some thousand in contingencies for the building next door and we're pushed into that already. Pretty well passed out of how you look at it, so.
Yeah, and then the question, the question becomes, okay, if we are gonna prove this change order, how are we gonna pay for it? Because there's not money in the water fund to pay for it. If the loan's maxed out, you know, to go get another loan is not an easy process.
You know, we don't wanna jack rates up. We don't have to. So we've maintained being in the middle of the road for our neighboring communities for a very long time and I'd like to keep it there. And I think that'll spark some tough conversations.
Different.
Conversation, because we're talking about water fund, but just overall with continuing of, um, residential tax abatements and things of that nature. When our development partners are telling us, they don't, they don't think we should have tax abatements anymore. Meetings we've had in the last two months, I think it's time to start having those conversations again so that in, you know, three to five years, depending on how long they actually were, um, we're not having these, we're not having these same types of conversations again. They, they served a purpose. They brought more people into town and now we just have to, you know, have a little bit of a tight window for the next three years before a lot of those houses start to hit the, the roll. So I didn't want to take it back to that conversation, but I think it's overall broad picture, not spending money, being fiscally wise, not taking on new projects and building bridges and things like that. I think, I think we're to that point where, um, so having the right conversation.
You know, the other thing outside of just the, the monthly bill that people pay for their utilities is when you've expanded your utilities in a big way, have you looked at your like system development charges? So when you bring in a, a new user, you know, it's, a lot of times it's easier for them to pay money upfront as part of their infrastructure cost. And so are you, are you capturing enough from them when they come to town? Or individual houses for that matter?
We can bring in one.
Um, because all of the money you collect upfront, what I call system development charges, is gonna help reduce the amount that you've gotta collect on a monthly basis from every other house there. And so, um, you know, there's different math on how to do that. And, and when the last time the city looked at those charges.
I know that's something you had brought up pretty recently, actually, was our startup fees and, and our connection fees and things like that for households. So, so question for you on the water fund stuff. So the water main was expanded out to the industrial park a couple of years back. There hasn't been any extra connection to that yet. The connection fee district is, is how it was planned to be paid for, but since there hasn't been any development in that direction, um, as we're talking about expanding the, um, industrials zone or industrial park, as we're talking to Kimberly about bringing some houses to this side of town and some potential commercial out over here, they've, they've pushed back a bit on the connection fee district and maybe not wanting that to be the way that they look into that. So what would your, what are your thoughts on, on how that, because that would ease some of this, correct? Getting some of that brought back to us.
Yeah, it's about, I mean, no developer is ever gonna want to pay any more connection fees than they ever have to.
Right.
You know, I mean, but it's a real cost. You just built a five million dollar facility to be able to service their ability to come. You can't ignore the cost of that infrastructure. And your existing rate payers shouldn't bear the burden. Now, will you ever re- recover fully the cost that it, probably not because that would, you know, prohibit all development. But I know that there's a lot of cities, you know, throughout the metro are taking a hard look at this. Uh, because expanding future, I mean, Central High Water Works has a one point three billion dollar CIP and somebody's gotta pay for it.
Sure.
And it's to expand for future, uh, users. So, you know, do you wanna be the cheapest? No. Do you wanna be the most expensive? No. But you also can't have developers just holding it over your head saying, you'll never develop if you have this connection. Uh, and it's, so it's a balance. I mean, you gotta, it's kind of like, nobody's ever gonna build a house if you don't have tax bait. Well, you kind of have to, don't have tax bait, you can see if anybody's gonna build a house. Uh, you know, and so there's not one perfect answer. Uh, but I would say, you know, take a look at when you looked at those reads last, how do you compare it to a whole city? How do you compare it to a bond grant? How do you compare it to all, you know, I mean, whoever else, you know, I'd wanna compare it to. Uh, how do you compare it to Aiken for that matter?
That's a very, I, I just know those are future conversations again that are gonna be coming up for the next two to four years when we get some pushback or some negotiating on there and to try to, we just need to keep that in mind for when it comes to the big.
Okay. Losing everybody. We'll try to keep, keep rolling here.
Exciting one now.
Yeah, sewer. Sewer is the problem child. Water's gonna become our problem child, but for now sewer is the problem child. Uh, we have a five percent rate ordinance built in. Uh, and, you know, if you go to page two, we haven't hit this number for the last three years, you know? Legally, you have to budget a one-ten, one-ten thousand. I don't think you're legally required to hit a one-ten, but you are legally required to set rates and charges sufficient. Down here, under all good assumptions, you think you're gonna hit a one-ten, so. You know, the way we got there in the twenty twenty-five budget is essentially the city just took out pretty much as much expenses out of the sewer fund, so. There's very little being paid out of the sewer funds to go back to city hall, out of city avenues. That's probably. I mean, we've went so far in twenty twenty-five that it's not really a sustainable number. You can't say that nobody's working on sewers. Nobody's going out to the lagoon and just, whatever, you gotta leave a lot of stuff here in our life. There are people. That work for the city, working on sanitary sewer. Um, but to make twenty twenty-five work, we essentially took out as much of expenditures as we could. So we brought that back in a little bit in twenty twenty-six, uh, to kind of. Just be more real with it in terms of what staff time is, is spending in there. Uh, but then what we did is we took everything else kind of down right to the bone. Back to that one-ten, and then we also freed up. The money that was going into the debt service fund, which was like twenty-three thousand, um. Sorry, forty-five thousand, and said, we're gonna come bring that, some of that out of local option sales tax, um. And some of that out of the property taxes to just try to get this fund balance, uh. You know, total cash at the end of twenty twenty-four was negative a hundred and twenty-eight thousand. So not only do we not have any money, we have negative a hundred, so, uh. We worked with Katie and Deb to transfer some money from lost to try to shore up the, it was really the. Uh, sewer lagoon facility we were paying off at like twenty-five thousand a year. And we were like, let's just get, let's just get it even. We've got money in local option sales tax. You know, you guys look at your checking account. You don't really see sewer fund money, general fund money. It's just, you got money in your checking account, but when you go into your fund account. You see a bunch of negatives, right? So what we're trying to do is we're trying to just clean up a lot of that. Uh, and so part of that was to do that, and then the sewer lift station also was about thirty-six thousand dollars over budget, uh. From the bond grosses that had come in. So. You know, twenty twenty-five, uh. We're kind of shoring that up, but then twenty twenty-six, we've got about nineteen percent, um. Of cash as a percentage of O and M. We'd like to see that at fifty to a hundred percent, so. You know, over the five-year period, sticking to this five percent rate increase that we've got built in, um, to the. To the ordinance currently, you know, that's like increasing, um. Increasing in twenty twenty-six by about sixty-four cents, um. Because we, we have been decreasing the capital improvement debt fee as the city has grown. You know, that debt fee is intended to cover the debt, and so as there's more people paying that fee. You shouldn't have to collect as much from every customer for that fee. So we've been lowering that by a dollar, um, you know, and. From last year to this year, and then from this year to next year, uh, and we'll continue to look at that. Uh, because we wanna stay true to what that debt fee was intended to be, um. But then expenses go up, and so, you know, we've got it, we've gotta have some expenses, so, you know. The waterfront, the water cost is going to about five dollars a month per person. I mean, that's the reality of it is. This is going up, um, about sixty-four cents a month, and then next year is about a dollar seventy-three, once we take away that reduction in that dollar. But, you know, we're running these utilities as about as tight as we can, and then that's why I think that. You know, making sure the developers understand it costs five million dollars to put that lagoon in. It costs five million dollars to do this water treatment plant, you know. We still owe a lot of money to, to do that, and if we're talking about expanding the lagoon again. You know, good God, you know, like, um. We can figure it out. You can do it. But let's get every, let's get some stuff paid for. Let's pay for the, the last lagoon before we go expand the next lagoon and. Uh, and V and K, why did we size this too small? You know, I mean.
Terrific question.
Okay, so, sorry.
So question for you as far as two things. So the five percent increase ordinance that's put into place. Changeable, not changeable, if we decided we needed to increase it more to, to, to pull some of this burden off of the sewer account? Hypothetically, of course.
Yeah, so I mean, right now you don't have to take any action on. Any of your utilities as you move through this budget process. The ordinances that you have in place have these numbers built in. And we essentially worked with Katie and Deb to size. The utility budgets to fit within the constraints based on the current ordinance. You can change that. It's a little late in the game, do you change in that? Because.
I meant more for twenty-seven when we hypothetically need another lagoon pit or something.
Yeah, you can change it anytime you decide to. Um, and you have to do three rate readings.
Correct.
Um, and there is, there is a. There is a law on the legis, or there is a senate study bill on the floor or whatever, in committee or something. That has just been introduced last week that says they're trying to cap utility rates at two percent increases. And so it's been getting a ton of. Uh, circulation around the different city administrators and, and different folks. If that law took effect. Then after July one, you can do it two percent or you can vote on it. Um, now. Sewers and water are essential corporate purposes of the city. You don't have to vote on essential corporate purposes of the city. So you could pledge property taxes and not necessarily have to go down that route. But it would cap what you can do with your sewer utilities.
That's okay.
So, no. But if you have that problem, so does Ankeny, so does every, every other.
I don't anticipate wanting to raise it. It's just out of curiosity where, when we, when we study where we fall and, and what we need to do, and. It comes back to the conversations about if we're gonna add buildings up to. The industrial park, for instance, he, you know, the, the five toilets versus fifty toilets, we're gonna need to know kind of what their usage expectations are. And then, you know, we talked about building a connection pipe up to. The new line. That all costs money that comes out of these funds that doesn't grow on trees, right?
I would certainly make sure they know how strapped your utilities are. I mean. Cause you're not hiding anything. I mean, the city has been trying to protect the current rate payers. From not paying for all of the growth and all of the capacity so you can grow. And we're at the brink, you know, I mean, we're making it work, but not by much. And so at some point, they need to chip in a little bit more than just property taxes, right? They gotta chip in some. What I call system development charges for the utilities. Cause them writing a two-hundred thousand dollar check or whatever the number is, they might not like it. But it's gonna really help the city keep utility rates affordable. Cause there's gonna be this, uh, it's gonna be challenging. To continue to build the infrastructure you need on the water and sewer front. And, and not, and not really, you know. Price out the people who have lived here for the last forty years.
So as far as the connection fee district that's established for the, the new water main that went in, there would be some. Prudence to starting to develop that area quicker to.
Yeah, the sooner you can get that money in, that's money we can use that we don't have to collect in rates. And so, uh, yeah, I mean, but you can't, you can't bond against that.
No, no, I, I meant more or less just. When we're considering what's next and we're, we're getting questions from developers and we're hearing it's gonna be three to five years before houses are built over there. And then they're going here next and here next and here next. I think some of the, the conversation from us could be, well, let's focus on the area where. It makes more sense and pulls a lot less of the stress or pulls a lot more stress off the people that already live here. Because any new development that goes up that direction or over that direction. Is directly taxing, not literally taxing, you get the point. It's, it's putting more of the burden on the people that already live here versus anything that goes west in this nice new area that they bought out here. It would make more sense for us to develop that next as a city as opposed to just approving more plats. On the other side of the road and the other side of the train tracks, just throwing that out there. That's a conversation we'd had with Kimberly and, and whatnot as well, so.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think that, that train of thought. You know, you've developed your infrastructure in a certain direction, in a certain way, and, and it's there, so let's, let's utilize what we've developed. Before we go develop a whole bunch more infrastructure and, and let the, you know. It's you telling the developers where the city's gonna grow, not the developer's telling you necessarily where it's gonna grow.
So one of the, one of the conversations, and we can circle back to this later, cause it's not. Directly tied to the twenty twenty-six budget, but there's been talk of bringing the school to town, and part of the thing, part of the. Big caveats about the school wants an area that has infrastructure in place, right? And we're, we're happy to have the new water treatment plant. We have the lagoon capacity as it sits today. As far as bringing that into town and, and what types, we need to start thinking about what types of added costs that would put on city infrastructure, cause obviously not just from a toilet account, and that's too basic, but. Um, from a usage standpoint, what would that do to impact these funds, you know, in twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty? Cause it wouldn't be anytime before that.
Yeah, schools are good utility rate payers. I mean, they're, they're typically bigger users, you know, and so you will get. And they do have to pay for utilities, unlike they don't pay property taxes, so they're not a good tax base necessarily. Um, you know, and there's something to be said about, you bring a school to town. I live right next to the elementary skid, school my kids go to. They go to the playground and play all the time. You know, so there's other amenities a- about having a school in town that are just not financial, but, but. They will be good utility customers, and so they will at, you know, you'll see them show up on the utility bill. They'll pay their utilities, you know, all year round. Um, and so they'll pay their way in that front, but. You know, do you need extra police around, you know, monitoring schools? Like, there's a lot more.
Yeah, yeah, I was speaking strictly to the, the water sewer funds, things of that nature, but yeah, there's a lot of other things to consider as well.
Well, and I, I would guess that you've got quite a bit of. Unutilized capacity on the waterfront, especially once we get this done, right? But it sounds like we've got, the, the time is ticking on the sewer lagoons in terms of what can we add. You know, so as you say, okay, we can add a hundred houses to the sewer lagoon, or we can add a school. You know, like what are the trade-offs there? You know, it takes a lot of city's staff to. You know, plow roads for a hundred houses too, so, you know, there's, there's a lot to think about, um, but I would. Continue to stay focused on the sewer lagoon because the longer we can. If, if we don't wanna have to expand that.
Well, so, so the conversation started.
But.
The conversation started because of a meeting we had last summer when there were some hypotheticals with. Hallen and hooking in and all this different stuff, right? That just, it's never gonna happen. No one's building an eight-mile ship out of the crossing.
Yeah.
A poop viaduct over R thirty-five. So there were some conversations around that, and one of the maps had showed the capacities of the current lagoons drawn out, and. It was kind of a record scratch moment where we looked down and we're like, well, well, our. Estimated population based off of rooftops and numbers we've operated on in previous budgets is around twelve to thirteen hundred, and this showed the capacity at fifteen hundred people. Well. The, the new Kimberly developments had been approved already by then, and you get the point. So when we're looking down the. The hypothetical path of we're two hundred people away, well, those houses will be built out in three to five years, but if we're adding capacity out there. School could potentially be coming to town. You get the point. Other houses popping up in town in new developed areas, we're getting to the point where we're within. Two hundred people, but that's only if our current population is really thirteen hundred people, because it's a fifteen hundred person capacity. And according to the last census, we're only at nine hundred and some change. So somewhere in there. I know there's some benefits to having a census done. I know there's a cost to having it done. I've, I've seen the newspaper clippings in the last couple of weeks about the realized funds. Uh, I think Polk City just put out theirs last week. Their new population estimate from their, uh, study that are their census that came through and the, the realized tax dollars. Is there something like that that we need to do to get a more accurate grip on how many people actually live in town versus what the funding is allowing, or what are your thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, typically about this time in the cycle, the special censuses like. Pay for themselves because you get additional road use tax money for population. It does affect the loss formula, so you need that, that money. I don't know, I mean, they're not cheap, right? But you're not also a, a town of twenty-five thousand people, so. I don't know what that cost is, but you get too close to twenty-thirty. And then you don't realize that benefit for very long, and so that's why I think the mid-range points of this year or next year, uh. I don't think it's a bad idea.
It's something we've talked about, and I know we've checked, we've had preliminary conversations with. Bondor Inn in the past and, and Chelsea over in Polk City, but maybe it's worth looking into, because if, if the true population's a thousand people, we're five hundred people away from the sewage lagoon, and we're not even talking about it for years to come, right?
Yeah, and are the lagoons just based on population or does?
How they respect from V and K and the population, and any questions, Katie, you can help me out on this. Any questions we've ever asked them, always go back to population. It doesn't really have anything to do with gallons of water being flushed in. We could probably get that.
So, so, I mean, if you add a school.
That's what we have to figure out.
Is that the equivalent of, you know, what's the, what's, what's the residential equivalency of? Uh, building out the industrial park, and so.
Correct.
Um. So anyway, the water, the sewer, the stormwater, they all fit within your, you know, your current ordinance. Um, on the stormwater side. There's a fifty cent increase built into the current ordinance, and then, um, there's a one dollar fifty cent for residential, one dollar for commercial. Um, or non-residential, and you know, the, the stormwater fund is. You know, in better shape, you know, several years ago, uh, we increased that, essentially doubled that fee, um. It is being used to pay, um, for some of the series twenty-two bonds back, but. You know, there's, from what I can remember, there's a lot of stormwater projects in Elkhart because the water really doesn't run anywhere. You know, and so there's a lot of, uh, things that you could do to help with the rain runoff and, but they're not cheap. I mean, they're like half a million dollars a pop. Um, and so, you know, this fund has about seventy-six, uh, thousand dollars. Or, you know, it had fifty-eight thousand dollars. It's, it's expected, um, to get up to seventy-six. Uh, we don't really have a bunch of CIP stuff built in here, but. There, there were projects in the former, uh, capital improvement plan. I would expect that there's gonna be more projects in here again. You know. I, I personally paid twenty-one dollars for my stormwater fee because Des Moines is doing the enormous amount of stormwater activity. Most cities are in that, you know, five to ten dollar range and are getting a little bit of stuff done. It's a hard one because if you really wanna move the needle on some projects, you're gonna have to do a, a bigger fee. But if you can point to. Hopefully more than just one part of town that you're improving, you can justify the fee.
So the history, what you're speaking of is the west. East side of town was done because the way the water flows, that was part of the twenty twenty-two. The second chunk of that would be the middle part of town, midtown, whatever you wanna call it. That originally was actually slated for twenty-six, twenty-seven. That's been pushed down. I think the last time we looked was twenty-eight, twenty-nine-ish.
Yeah.
But part of what's going on in that part of town and in this west side of town as well is there's a lot of stormwater infiltration that's actually making its way into our lagoons. It's screwing up our usage of our lagoons, so. Keeping an eye on those projects in twenty-eight-ish is by twenty-nine, twenty, I don't have the CIP in front of me, but that's, that's where that's going to come in, because we're hoping that alleviates some of the tax that's being placed on the lagoon right now, because it's getting a lot of stormwater that it's not supposed to be getting.
Yeah.
So.
And, and I would say that your, your best bet to fund that is probably with. Geo bonds, property taxes, and then as much money as, you know, raise this stormwater fee as high as you think you politically can, because you certainly can use the dollars. But, you know, also keeping it affordable. And then use as much of that money as you can to abate the geo bonds, and so having a balance, because if you wait. Till you can afford it just out of stor- stormwater revenues, I'm fearful that it's just never gonna happen.
Well, and it benefits the people that have lived here and have lived here for a long time, and not necessarily the people who just moved in, so we're not asking. Them to pay for something that they're not seeing benefit from, like we may be with, with water treatment expansions and things like that.
Yeah, and if it delays. A lagoon expansion, then it helps everybody, and then you can make that argument that, that, that it is helping everybody. So the fact that you have one for a city that your size. Is relatively progressive. There's a lot of small cities that don't have a stormwater charge, uh, but flooding was such a problem. Um, that it got a lot of attention, and so, um. What questions? And so, um, what questions? Do you have? Anything I missed, Katie or Deb, that we haven't told them?
Specific to this budget, correct?
Yeah.
Can you talk about the infrastructure fee at all in depth?
Good question.
Just some history, I guess, a little bit of history behind the infrastructure fee and what the future looks like on it.
So the infrastructure fee you're talking about is the, is the sewer portion of that capital.
Oh, yeah, the $20 per month that everybody has.
Yeah, so.
Talked about that, yeah.
We just, yeah, so the ordinance brings it down to $18 per month come July 1. So that's a dollar reduction. Um, and so our modeling, you know, we could continue to reduce that, but the sewer fee is in such rough shape. Like, we're trying to get that fund positive.
Okay.
It feels a little bit, you need all the money you can get. You know, in theory, that was, that project was $350,000 over budget, you know? And so that was never factored into the original $21, I think is what it was. And so, in theory, as the, as the, as the city grows and as that fund gets kind of back on level footing, then I say that, you know, we continue to look at reducing that until the future. Um, but I say let the current ordinance kind of run its course.
Correct.
Let's get to a better footing and then we can look at reducing that, you know, further. Uh, the other theory, the other thing that has been discussed is, you know, you owe over a million dollars on the loan that that's reversible. So.
That's what we talked about.
You can build that fund though and then pay it off early if you've got too much money. But you don't even have enough money to pay for the lift station in the next couple of years that you, you had there. So, uh.
That's not, that's just not an option.
Yeah, okay. I mean, you can reduce it, but you're going to have to increase the other fees. And so six of one.
Yep, makes sense. Okay, good question. Very good. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Cal, anything else?
Thanks.
Yes.
Everybody's favorite agenda item then, number 19 this time around, motion to adjourn?
Right.
Wait, I can't make the motion.
I motion to adjourn.
He said his.
For Edler Campbell.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.